Next Wednesday.
No, I just couldn't get here in time. It's crazy. All set, Frank?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Thank you and welcome to Foxborough Board of Selectmen's June 12th meeting. I'll go through the agenda briefly before we begin. At 7:00 PM we'll have citizens input. David Brown from the J.C.'s will be introduced in the J.C. summer concert schedule. At 7:05 I'm going to give a chairman's update, which are just generally some things in between meetings and some quick updates and things to come. At 7:10 we're going to hear from the New England Patriots on the Country Music Festival. At 7:30 we're going to have a public hearing on the Bruce Springsteen concert at Gillette Stadium. At 7:45 we also have another public hearing on the 2012 UMass football home games scheduled for Gillette Stadium. At 8:00 we'll have our third public hearing on the 2012 New England Patriots home game schedule. At 8:15 our town finance director, Randy Scollins, is going to be presenting to us bond acceptance for the water treatment plant to be constructed. At 8:25 there will be another public hearing for the change of a manager at the Finn Lounge, which is at the Bass Pro over on Patriots Place, where manager James Camerata will come before us. At 8:35 town manager Kevin Pecos will be discussing a speed limit request change for signage on Payson Road. At 8:45 Kevin Pecos will be going through, or we will be holding, Kevin's, our town manager's yearly performance review. We have a bunch of action items and then we will go into executive session to discuss firefighters' grievance in the DPW contract. So, actually I see Michael Boynton.
Pledge.
I was looking for him. He left. Just going to ask somebody else to say it.
Oh.
That's all. Pauline, you want to say the pledge of allegiance today?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just want to keep you on your toes. All right, so anyone for citizens' input?
Yes, it's regarding the parking, the lights.
I know your name, but if you could just say your name for the record.
Sullivan Kennedy, Coacassett Street.
Okay, yep.
You had sent me an email saying you're going to drive down Sherman, Maple, and the other streets.
Just to see the light, yeah.
Now, did you?
I did not drive. I spoke to Kevin Pecos and he's going to leave me hanging here, isn't he?
Well, my—
Is Kevin coming to this meeting?
Yes.
As far as I know.
I spoke to him this afternoon. He was reaching out to DPW director and he was going to get a list of all the poles and the lights.
Yeah, because it's getting a little ridiculous. And also too, when they had the Founder's Day parade on the corner of Sherman and Coacassett, there was way too many cars there and the police and fire department would not be able to get down the street. I noticed on Maple they had signs saying no parking on one side, so maybe they should do that next year.
Okay, two different things. The lights, I am relying on Kevin, but I did drive through. I didn't see the lights out. I saw them dim. I just don't know whose poles they're on.
But there needs to be more lights.
Okay.
It's gotten to the point people are falling. I fell again walking the dog.
Because of the lights?
No lights.
Okay. All right, if you can stick around when Kevin comes in.
All right, that's fine.
See if he's got an update on the lights. But I know they are on. They may be too dim for your liking, but I don't know if they meet or don't meet the standards.
Yeah, and also if they have to add some, they need to.
Okay. And on Founder's Day, I don't know the traffic routes, to be honest with you.
The chief on Park, it was Maple. They had signs saying no parking.
Temporary, they said.
Yeah, they were temporary. There were pink signs or red signs they had, and they probably should do that on Sherman and Coacassett, especially there's a lot of seniors who live on Sherman and the trucks would not be able to get down.
Okay. And Chief, can you look into that when you do for the next year's Founder's Day? Dick?
If I may, Dick Heidecker, Grove Street. I sent you an email on the Labor Council versus the Town Council issue. I am totally upset with what has happened. We talked, both you, the board, the former chairman, about having Town Council rule on this. We spoke at the special town meeting. The guy was sitting on the stage. I hope we didn't pay him because he didn't give us any answers, but he was sitting up there. The question that was posed goes clear back to February of '11. This is nothing new. It is included in six editions of your minutes. This is nothing new. It took 16 months to get a letter, not from the source that we had all discussed and at the special town meeting, but from Labor Council. The letter comes in early March, March 15th, whatever the date is. He makes a big statement that he ran a copy specially for me at the last meeting, and he hands it to me as he's explaining the item. You had it for over 60 days, apparently. It came in and was shelved. Why didn't I get it March 22nd? I know at least one member of your board had it. So the question is, why didn't I get it? Because I was one of the main requests for this material. Moreover, I had asked for the letter of inquiry from the town to council. You all know attorneys. You all watch TV. There's always an attorney on every side of a question. So the point is, with the letter of inquiry, it is important to know what question was asked. If it was very simple, can I negotiate with the town things? Of course you can. There's nothing stopping that. But you had a bylaw that was passed in '96, which was never changed in '04 by the Town Manager Act. We had a town government study committee. If they had completed their job and wiped out a whole series of bylaws because they no longer applied, or they left them in because they felt that they do apply, we still don't have clearance on it. The letter from Labor Council quotes the Ipswich case. This is a case between the fire chief and the town manager on a personnel issue. Has nothing to do with a town manager negotiating issue. I think if nothing else, we need some censure, some motion, to identify why it took 16 months to get an answer. Why it took 60 days to get an answer to you and to me and bring it up in open session. And what happened in the interim? We all know that there are bylaws that don't apply anymore. And Section 6 of the Town Manager Act says, if this act does not void specifically, then it is not voided. There is no change. It was never voided. We still have the negotiating team. What the hell happened to it? Rebecca signed the fire contract in '09. This was five years after we passed the Town Manager Act. I'm told by the Wage Personnel Board people, they were in the process until Andy left town. We are told, and Randy backed up Kevin, that they've done it the new way for the last eight years. Maybe you need to bring in the Wage Personnel Board, query them, and find out exactly what went on. You have a few unhappy people over there. A few. And let me just highlight, as a closure, a very simple item. You have town employees negotiating town employee contracts with town employees. This is ripe for Chicago or Boston. It's not ripe for Foxborough. I spoke with Kevin earlier today when he was over at the senior center. There's an item on your agenda. Apparently there's a problem with the fire department and a grievance. Are we going to mediation? Are we going to arbitration? Shouldn't the town know if there's a problem on this issue before it's all hidden in executive session? He asked me to bring it up. Shouldn't we, as taxpayers, know what's going on? Shouldn't we? That closes my message for today. Thank you.
And I don't want to brush off, Dick, because there's a lot there. Believe me, I'm doing my best to try and capture all the emails that you've sent. I know, I'm still going through the stuff that the Attorney General at that whole level. I did talk to Rebecca a few weeks ago, probably about a month ago, when we're going through all the wage studies. I got her opinion on a few things. You know, you're bringing up the fire contract. It is on our agenda under executive session. The way I'm trying to handle things, we are going to be discussing that under executive session, but tonight we're not discussing our approach to it. What I've asked Leo Peliquin to do is come in front of us and explain to the board how the negotiation process works, what under the Strong Town Managers Act is required. Should a board of selectmen be in there? Should a board of selectmen not be in there? Just so everyone's on the same page. A few meetings ago, we've looked at the Strong Town Managers Act on the peripheral, saying there's a lot of confusion. It showed its head during the casino discussions. Who had the right to do what? Is it the board's responsibility? Is it the town manager's responsibility? Is it a, you know, we're confused as well because it hasn't been tested. And I asked Kevin specifically not to participate in his understanding of the Town Managers Act. We've got a board member that's wrapping their arms, putting a group together, and is going to come back to us and explain with Town Council what the Strong Town Managers Act is. I can ask your opinion, but it's going to be different from David's opinion. It's going to be different from Mark's opinion because nobody knows, because nobody's tested it. We had a past strong town manager. Arguably, people could say he didn't enact his powers. We have a strong town manager in every sense of the word that may go too far. Part of the town manager's review is, if you're going to stick around, we're going to talk about that as well. So, you know, some of the stuff that you've brought up were spot on. We're dealing with reviews of the police overtime, the fire overtime. You were right on some things, you were wrong on some things, but it's a process and we're getting there.
I agree.
Anyone else under citizens' input? Dave, do you want to speak about your schedule?
Let me just spread this around and spread some of this. So anyhow, David Brown, I'm 17 Merican Way. I'm a member of the Foxborough J.C.'s, and I actually have a chairman of our board with us tonight, Monica Fizla. And I just want to invite really everybody here at the board, everybody in the community, to take part in our 2012 concert series, not by coming up and playing an instrument or singing, because we really don't need that, but to come and attend. This is our 21st year for this program, and it will start Thursday night. We kick it off every year with the jazz band from the high school. And the Foxborough Federal Savings Bank is actually sponsoring them. We have a number of sponsors this year, and I just want to get their names in to recognize their support for this project. Heather and Max Lowell are actually the cheerpeople for this project. I've been involved with the fundraising for it. So just to kind of run you through it, like I said, we have the high school jazz ensemble this week, sponsored by Foxborough Federal Savings. The Galley Dogs next week, sponsored by Bay Colony, the Bay Colony Group. The Central Avenue Band, sponsored by Don Rodman and Rodman Ford. Jumpin' Jubba, I think I'm saying that right. That's on July 12th, actually. That's sponsored by The Winefells and May Fairiarty. Victims of Gravity, sponsored by On-Tip Gloves. Don Rodman's are back again on July 26th, sponsoring another group. And then on August 2nd, we have the Infractions, Douglas A. King Builders, that they do a lot of construction work in town. And finally, the Coca Banana Band, sponsored by The Learning Experience, which is a child development center over at Chestnut Green. So, we're pleased to do this, and we'd like to get as, you know, as much participation as possible. It's a great night. If you've been, I know all of you have been at one time. It's laid back. Bring your chairs, bring your blankets, bring your dog. My dog can't wait. So that's what I have.
Great. Thanks, David.
Jim, wouldn't the board need a motion to allow the use of the common, some of the authority?
They did.
No.
They have the signed form back.
I just wanted to make sure.
Beginning of the year.
We took care of that a month ago.
Good. And I won't make a motion, Dave.
And I just wanted to say, I mean, the J.C.'s, if you hadn't seen them around during Founder's Day, you'll see them during the concerts. But you guys rolled up your sleeves, the hot dogs, the hamburgers, the directing traffic. You do a tremendous amount of work. And these, and I know a lot of us attend them, nice family hour, or two hours with the blankets, and it's just a nice way to relax and it's free. And so I encourage anyone that hasn't been there to come down and see what it's about. How's your membership doing?
Better. Doorbell's growing. But we're always looking for members. The more members we have, the more we can do.
Great. Yeah, thank you.
You're absolutely welcome.
I was just going to give a couple quick under chairman's update, kind of a little bit more of a thank you, reaching out to Cindy Haddad and all the members that were on the Foxborough Founder's Day. If you went there this weekend, I think if it wasn't record attendance, it was close to it. I know that a lot of the places sold out of food. The scouts did a tremendous job at a dedication ceremony in the morning for Kyle Kush over at the Payne School. And then the rec department the following day had a couple hundred kids doing a fishing derby. So if you want to find out what Foxborough's about, if you come next year, that's just a tremendous thing to see, and I thank you for all those people. A quick announcement, the school committee had a recent resignation. Kate Kaminsky resigned from her position. And the way that the Mass general laws work, the selectmen and the school committee have to jointly appoint a new member, and that member will go for the duration of that one year, and then there'll be a reelection. So to let the board know, we're going to have a July 10th meeting. It's going to be our meeting. We're going to invite the school committee to participate. I think there's three or four applications in for that, to be appointed as a school committee member. If anyone at home wants to apply to be appointed to a school committee position, please see Sandra. She has an application. Or Wendy Wills at the school department. They can hook you up with an application. And hopefully on July 10th, we can do all those interviews and appoint somebody that night. June 28th, if the board recalls, we're meeting with the planning board. It's going to be their meeting. We're going to attend, and that's on the, to discuss the housing production plan that we talked about a couple meetings ago.
Is that the McGinty?
At the McG—
No.
No, it's here.
It's here.
It's here, yep. June 4th, I wanted to thank the chief. You initiated and held with Bill Casparra and a few other people an informational meeting for the new warrant parking ban regulations. I think that was pretty well attended. It seemed like you just got a lot of information and you're going to come back for some decisions or some direction?
Correct. In fact, we had asked for volunteers, which we received, so we'll have a subcommittee of the total group, there's approximately 60 people attending.
Excellent.
And we did get some viable feedback that we'll incorporate and have further discussion and come up with effective enforcement.
Okay. And then the Board of Selectmen initiated the open office hours on Tuesday nights. Does someone want to update? Is that something that was well received and we want to continue on with that?
Yeah, I did the morning session, and we had two ladies came in with some issues. And I was able to directly help one lady and then the other lady is being helped by Roger Hill. So, but they appreciated having the office hours. They thought it was a good idea. And I guess there was an evening session?
Yep. Mark and I were here from 5:00 to 6:30, and we had a resident that was asking about the fire station and the fact that there was legislation that we were asking Jay Barrows about. Was there something in legislation about?
About the fire station?
Yeah.
To get approval to auction it.
Right, the parcel behind it, yes.
It was behind it, right? Okay, so at some point, we're going to want to update on that. He, you know, obviously liked to move on the sale of it. He also wanted to say thanks for the parking lot and that actually it seems like it's getting more and more use. He actually, you know, has nothing else to do, so he sits and he counts the cars, and there's, you know, 20 to 25 cars.
Over 60 subscribers at this point.
And, yeah, and he said, you know, he's never missed the train by taking the shuttle. And he sort of liked my idea about that off-site, family-only parking lot for tailgating. So maybe that's something that we can talk about at some point too, Randy. So, and then unfortunately, Dick didn't get the message that we were doing from 5:00 to 6:30. So he came in before my next meeting at like quarter of 7:00 with a huge stack of papers that he wanted to discuss, but he was a little late for that one. So I guess whoever is going to be next month, which next month we want to talk about, it will be the 3rd, so we probably don't want to do the 3rd.
The 3rd, yeah.
So we'll push it off to maybe the 10th or something. I know July's kind of a month of people going on vacation, but—
We have a scheduled meeting for the 10th, so why don't we just do it that same day?
Okay.
That'd be me again in the evening.
I can do it.
You, Lorraine, in the evening. And then, Jeanne, you still going to do that morning?
You got it, Dick? Did you write that down?
Put it down.
Okay.
Aren't you on vacation that day, Dick?
Every day's vacation.
So I encourage folks that don't feel comfortable coming up here because, you know, they're on camera or whatever reason they might have, to come up and chat with one of us or two of us who happen to be here, you know, Jenny in the morning and then us after work. So I think it's a great idea, Randy.
Excellent. So it goes on.
So it goes on.
And lastly, just some of the upcoming stuff, we are going to be interviewing the town council firms. We're going to be talking about the goals and objectives of the next couple meetings, the 19th, yep. And review of health insurance for town employees, so some of the upcoming stuff. Janet Kennedy is here. She came a couple weeks ago to talk about the streetlights. So she just asked, and you were out of the room, so did you get a chance to look at the lights, the poles, the ownership?
Yep. The company that does, town owns about a third of streetlights, and about two-thirds are owned by National Grid. This is one of the ones that the town owns. The company Republic came out and looked at it, attempted to replace the bulb, and it didn't go on. So there's some sort of a problem with the fixture itself. They're going to come back out, they're going to try to figure out what the problem is. If they can't figure it out, I've ordered them to put up a new fixture. That's obviously a lot more costly to the town, but we're going to get the light on there one way or the other. I'm sorry?
What about the down Sherman and Maple and Park? A lot of them don't have lights.
We're getting a lot, I've heard a lot of complaints about people talking and not being at the mic.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize, yeah.
I don't really need a mic.
But they can't, they said they can't—
Well, cable does.
They said they can't even hear me.
Okay, what it is, is like on Park and on Maple, there's no lights, and there really should be, because I'm sure the town doesn't want lawsuits when people are falling.
Let me explain. We did some research. It was approximately, I, nobody knows the exact date, but somewhere around five, six years ago, the board made a policy decision to turn off all but every third street light in town. I guess this was a budget move of some sort. Now, the one at the intersection, I feel comfortable on my own authority putting that one on because it's an intersection, it's kind of a no-brainer, it should have a light. I don't know how coincidentally it got turned off because the intent was not to turn off intersection lights, so that'll get turned on. But in terms of turning on a whole bunch of additional lights, that's really a policy decision of the board, because the decision to turn them off originated with the board. The issue you'd have to deal with is if you're going to turn on all the lights on Maple and whatever other streets, I will promise that immediately you'll get complaints from other parts of town where people will say legitimately, well, if you turn all those lights back on, what about my lights? And so it really, beyond that one at the intersection, which I'm happy to do, past that, it really rises to a policy decision of the board, and that's something that you folks need to decide. And if there's any kind of background work I can do for you, I'd be happy to do it, but, you know, that'll be up to the chair to decide if he wants to schedule an agenda item and how the board wants to go.
So I think that the policy was like every third light was—
Right. I'm not so sure there's a written policy, but there was a verbal policy.
Right.
And perhaps even a vote of the board, maybe, I don't know.
I'm just asking if there's a way that maybe Roger Hill could have somebody kind of double-check that that is still the case, that it's every third and not like more than that on some of our streets.
Well, I can tell you that in intervening years since, there have been lights turned on intermittently here and there where somebody's requested it and provided a good justification. So I suspect if you went out on the street at night, and I'll actually do it tonight on the drive home, you're probably not going to find it consistently every third light.
Right, right, but—
But more or less, that is the policy.
That's the policy.
Now, remember, National Grid may do something different because they own those lights. We pay for them, but they own them. So, because we pay an electric utility bill, and it's multi—
But we made mention to that.
It's over $100,000.
We did make mention to that while they were here.
Did you?
Yeah. Members saying that.
So they will only turn, they'll replace bulbs, but they'll only turn new lights on if we direct them to, and I don't do that.
Okay.
Wouldn't we be more concerned with lights being on?
You need to sit up—
Oh, yeah, I got to lean up.
Yeah, don't be yelling at them if you're not going to—
Yeah, I'm not yelling at anybody.
There you go.
Wouldn't we be more concerned about the lights being on in the fall? I mean, right now it's light till 8:30 at night.
Yeah.
But in the fall, as we all know, it'd be 5:00 before you know it, 4:30 by mid-October or late October.
Yeah.
I would think we'd want to extend them on in that time period till, I mean, you can't run them all night. They can put them on at a time, a lot of them are on a sensor, aren't they?
Yes, they are, but they're on a, they're on a daylight, they're on a light sensor, so they come on and they stay on all night.
Let's do this, since this wasn't a—
Yeah, put it on there.
Can you reach out to Roger and just have him put the one page of summary of where the lights are, what he's seeing is on and off?
Yep.
And the process for turning them back on or addressing it?
Yep.
I think the last thing we want is five selectmen to turn around and figure out which lights need to go back on.
All right.
All right, at 7:30 we had the discussion on Bruce Springsteen concert at Gillette. And if you recall, the board had—
We're not going to do the country festival?
We got to do Public Union at 7:30.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right, you're right, you're right, you're right.
So—
No, that's, you're right, it's a discussion on the New England Country Music Festival.
So do you want to do them—
Not Bruce Springsteen.
So do you want to do them—
No, it was still before 7:30. So at 7:10, let's talk about the New England Country Festival. And this is the, this is the concert. If you recall back, in January, we gave them conditional approval and basically stipulated in four months, come back to us on this date. The chief was going to work to come up with a traffic mitigation or a traffic plan. I did talk to Dan Murphy today to attend if we had any questions. And Michael Boynton, who's a town administrator and a good neighbor in Walpole, has come, really not to present but to listen. You were part of the discussions in December, in January. So Chief, do you want to come up or anyone else that—
Thank you. I have just a brief presentation and a handout for the board to update them. This is Ron, thank you. Based on the board's decision in January, we did have a meeting on March 16th that was facilitated by Mr. Murphy at the stadium. The meeting involved both management and operational personnel from the stadium, the Massachusetts State Police, as well as police and fire officials from Walpole and Mr. Boynton, the town administrator, to discuss some of the outcomes from the concerts from 2011. One of the key factors at the Saturday concert in particular was the traffic jams that occurred. And that was a result of a policing strategy to reduce the binge drinking and the time that people would be allowed in the parking lots to consume alcohol that had created problems for us in previous years. That aspect of the operation was more successful. Individually, we had fewer custodies on both Friday and Saturday than we had in previous years. in previous years. Uh, however, one of the drawbacks was the traffic jam that occurred on Saturday. So with that discussion in mind, uh, we did some, uh, analysis of different tactics that could be utilized. And as a result of that, uh, we came up with some following elements for the traffic operation that are outlined. First, the stadium is gonna be finalized in a proposal to Mass Highway to create storage lanes on both four ninety-five and Route ninety-five should traffic back up. Uh, this would assist in having a storage spot that's pre-designated ahead of time to feed traffic onto Route one. We're gonna have additional traffic posts along local roadways to monitor traffic movement and to open and close certain access to areas as needed. And as a complement to that, the stadium is going to implement a signage package to alert motorists several days out about road closings. And my agency will be doing, uh, a town-wide call-out to all residents about traffic restrictions in the stadium area seventy-two hours prior to the Friday concert. Uh, as a follow-up to that meeting, I've had conversations with, uh, Matt Bukarski, the traffic director for Gillette Stadium, as well as Jeff Stewart from the State Police, the barracks commander that sets up their traffic operation, as well as Deputy Chief Carmichael from the Police Department. I know that Lieutenant Leland from the Walpole Police was also, uh, in present tonight for this meeting. Uh, we also, uh, I also was in contact, one aspect last year that happened that, uh, was not anticipated was that the midget football jamboree was taking place on Saturday afternoon, which brought a whole different group of people into the traffic zone, so to speak, along North Street, Payson Road, one forty, um, Chestnut Street, that created further log jams in that particular area. I spoke with the president of our local football association. Uh, he was glad that I had contacted him and that he'd be speaking with his board. It was his opinion that they would not have any jamboree or home games on that date because of some of the feedback that they got from angry parents and crying children, that they couldn't make their games on time. So that should relieve some of the traffic impact. I'm also in the process of developing several contingency plans, uh, given that any operation that we do, uh, has a potential of not working as planned. Uh, so we'll have contingencies in place to redirect traffic and to open and close lots as necessary. Uh, and again, the, the memo does outline, uh, that particular aspect. Uh, it's still a work in progress. It's still evolving depending on different information we get. Uh, at the NFL, uh, training conference I was at last week, it was really a good opportunity because many of the facilities that have NFL teams are having the Kenny Chesney concerts prior to us. And several of them are suburban facilities like ours that will have, uh, parking issues. Uh, I don't think we'll be like Buffalo that has people come in three days early. Uh, but again, one of my goals is to try and hold the lots as long as possible, uh, because of the behavior issues. But I, I'm realistic enough that last year's plan, uh, went sour sometime between one-thirty and one-forty, that the roads that had been operating and moving stopped. And it took an, at least another half hour after the opening of the lots to finally get the traffic moving again. So, uh, we have to adjust as needed.
Before we open it up to the, thank you, Chief, to the board, I see representatives from MPS and Walpole and the Stadium Advisory Committee. Is there anyone that wants to add anything to that? Michael?
No.
Yeah, if you could, uh, you're welcome to come to the table or to the microphone,
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Uh, Chief Stillman is unable to join us, but, uh, the, as Chief O'Leary said, Chief Stillman did meet, uh, with Chief O'Leary, Lieutenant Stewart, members of the, um, stadium leadership about the situation. Uh, I believe that they're very satisfied that contingency plans will be put in place. Uh, that's the real key part of this, is that the first sign of any difficulty with traffic, um, that the contingency plans become effective and we don't end up with the situation that we had. As, as you know, um, and I've said this to your board, um, we have had a great relationship with Gillette Stadium and the, and the folks there. Uh, it had, you know, we've, we've worked on police protection for South Walpole, uh, fire protection in South Walpole, and the stadium has been a good partner in that. Um, to that end, I also thank your board for the consideration that you had as part of the license contingency, the license, uh, provision that sets this in motion. Because again, you license the stadium, we partner with everyone, and it has worked very well. And we'd like to obviously see that going forward. Um, and again, thank you to Chief O'Leary for helping to spearhead this and make sure that, uh, the challenges over the last couple of years are a thing of the past.
Thank you, Michael. All right, Linda, go around the board.
Just, um, thanks, Chief. Uh, you know, let's, you know, work on this way ahead of time in conjunction with the stadium. I think that's a great thing because, um, and I know it's still a work in progress, but by the time we get this all figured out, probably the, uh, the concerts will be gone. So, um, but I think that, uh, I think it's great. And these look like great solutions. So I hope they work.
Jenny?
Um, I was a member of the audience when the, um, license first came up and, um, I heard what Walpole's concerns were. So I'm very glad everything worked out so that they're happy and, you know, hopefully this'll solve the problems. Thanks.
Um, I just had a question about, um, the signage package in, you know, to alert motorists in advance. I think that's great. Just wondering if there could be some additional push to, if there are radio stations who will be talking up the event in any way, if, if there could be a statement said that, uh, don't come until X o'clock because you won't be able to get into a lot, just to reemphasize it that way to, to the folks who aren't typically driving through the area prior to the event. That was the only other thought I had. Thanks.
Thank you. Mark?
As well as I think the stadium always does, is email, email people the same information. So I think they'll still consider that part. But no, some good effort into that. Thank you.
And I, I don't want to be redundant. I share the same sentiments. Thank you all for working together over the last four months to address what our requests were. And I did look through the, um, the license. I don't think there's anything in here that has to change based on what we talked about today.
I, I don't believe it does, sir.
All right. I think you're good to go then. I don't think we need to revote it.
Okay.
No.
Because it was already voted contingent upon this meeting, so we had the meeting. And, um, that's it. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Could I bring up something out of order? Uh, 'cause I noticed on the action list, uh, you're parking a lot of applications. And I apologize 'cause I didn't realize it was on an action list. Just to explain something, uh, we had a meeting with all the lot operators and owners in February, um, at their suggestion, and we rewrote the parking lot regulations based on feedback from them. Uh, I then, uh, re-edited the input from the group and sent it back out to them. Uh, I did not get any further commentary from the board. Uh, so along with the license that you vote on for the lot operators, uh, they'll have, uh, new and revised regulations, uh, that I'll have, uh, a sermon attached to the licenses.
Okay. And those are all effective July first?
Correct.
Two thousand and twelve.
You know, so if they, uh, it would certainly give the board, uh, to review the regulations if you wanted to make any amendment yourself. And that's my fault. I did not time it properly.
Okay.
But I wanted to make you aware of it.
We get, yeah, very good.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Chief. Uh, for seven-thirty, uh, we want to read a public hearing for the Bruce Springsteen concert at Gillette Stadium.
Hearing notice, the Board of Selectmen acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter one forty, Section one eighty-one, and Section one eighty-three A, and Chapter one thirty-six, Section four, Town of Foxborough, Revised General Bylaws, Article five, Section six, and also Stadium Rules and Regulations, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, June twelfth, two thousand and twelve, beginning at seven-thirty PM in the Andrew A. Golla Junior Meeting Room, forty South Street, to review the application submitted by MPS LLC for the Bruce Springsteen concert. Concert. This event is proposed for Gillette Stadium. Application for this event is on file at the Office of Selectmen. All interested parties are welcome to attend. Board of Selectmen, Foxborough, Mass.
Thank you. So in our package, we have the actual application. We have the conditions. We have letters of, uh, would appear to be sign-offs from, uh, the Stadium Advisory Committee, the police, the fire, and the Board of Health. I think, any questions from the board? Is there anyone here that wants to come to the table and present it?
Yeah.
And I know we know you, but if you could just say your names and your positions.
Sure. Uh, Dan Murphy with, uh, MPS LLC, Gillette Stadium.
Mike Asher, co-vice chair of the Stadium Advisory Committee.
And Joel Angelico, uh, the other co-vice chair of the Stadium Advisory Committee. As I told you earlier, it takes two to replace George Bell, the chair, so he can't be here tonight. So that's why Mike and I are here.
Thank you.
You want to give a quick overview?
Sure. Yeah, this is the Bruce Springsteen concert, as you mentioned, it's for Saturday, August eighteenth. Um, he has played here before, two thousand and three and two thousand and eight. Uh, MPS is the in-house promoter for the event, so will handle all, you know, permits for stage, uh, sound monitoring, et cetera. All done in-house. Um, it's a one-act show as he's, as he did in two thousand and three and two thousand and eight. Uh, parking lots will be up to the chief, but we're targeting four-thirty PM. Uh, we will be using Putnam Parkway with, uh, the proper passes. Uh, gates are at six PM. Show start time is seven-thirty, and we're requesting an eleven-fifteen, uh, curfew. Um, he has a general admission area in front of his stage like he has done in the past, so it's all reserved seats except for the twenty-four hundred seats and right in front of the stage. Um, really, the one, one challenge we'll, we'll have is not much so much for the show, but we'll have the show. Then we have Monday Night Football, and then, uh, the concerts the following weekend. So we'll have some operational challenges, but nothing that should affect the operation of the concert.
And from the advisory committee, uh, any follow-up on that? And your letter was in the packet.
Right. Everything, everything's all right. We've asked for a couple of things, which Dan has already done, taken care of for us, and it's fine.
Okay. Uh, questions from the board? Mark?
I'll bring it up again, Dan. Is there any discussions about, you know, not allowing glass containers in parking lots at any event in the future?
There haven't been.
Uh, you know, I'm, I'm thinking we gotta start working towards that. I'm sorry, Linda. I think we gotta start working towards that. You know, um, banning glass containers in the parking lots, it only would have helped the situation, not at Bruce Springsteen. I'm not worried about Bruce, but others. That, um, 'cause a glass ball can become a blunt object. It can become a weapon. And it can be, it's awful, just a mess to clean up. So I just, it's always been a concern of mine. I'll just reiterate it every year till we, I finally get my way someday. Other than that, I have no issues at all.
Okay. Lorraine?
I'm all set. Thanks.
I'll say.
Linda?
I don't see a problem. And, I mean, how are you gonna police that?
It's easy. It's, I'm telling you, once you start it for one year, I'll reiterate, we've done it in motocross since nineteen seventy-eight, and nobody brings glass containers to motocross events ever. So, once you start it, it takes a year to implicate, and then it's over.
But don't you have the same people going?
No, it's all different. It's all over the country. It's just banned. You know, I know they're banned inside the stadium, so why not on the outside the stadium? You know, you get a plastic bottle inside the stadium, no matter if it's beer, water, juice, whatever. So I think in the future, we just need to lean towards that.
Uh, just one more input. Uh, and this goes along with the complexity of that time of the year. Um, there also is gonna be some kind of, um, of construction that's happening in Patriot Place for solar covers. We brought that up at that point, and, uh, Bill Gaspar is engaged with the stadium and what's going on there and what might, might need to be restricted at that point. Dan, I, I think that's still going on. Is that true?
Right. We'll, we'll have staging areas, but they'll, we'll have staging areas, but they'll be just cordoned off, so, you know, fans can get in those areas.
Okay. Good to know. Okay, any other?
Motion, oh, you want to...
Anyone from the public with any comments? Okay, so the hearing was open. Do I have a motion?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Seconded. All, all those in favor? Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so five-nothing, Pauline.
Move that we approve the, um, Bruce Springsteen concert at Gillette Stadium.
Motion made. Seconded?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five-nothing, Pauline. Thank you, gentlemen, for your time to come in. Appreciate it. You want to stay around for the next one?
Sure.
Okay. It's another hearing, uh, scheduled for seven forty-five. We're just on time.
Okay. The Board of Selectmen acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter one forty, Section one eighty-one, and Section one eighty-three A, and Chapter one thirty-six, Section four, Town of Foxborough, Revised General Bylaws, Article five, Section six, and also Stadium Rules and Regulations, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, June twelfth, two thousand and twelve, beginning at seven forty-five PM in the Andrew A. Golla Junior Meeting Room, forty South Street, to review the application submitted by MPS LLC for the two thousand and twelve University of Massachusetts Home Games. These events are proposed for Gillette Stadium. Application for these events is on file at the Office of Selectmen. All interested parties are welcome to attend. Board of Selectmen, Foxborough, Mass.
Okay. Give a...
Sure. This, so, University of Massachusetts, they've joined the MAC Conference. So we have a, a five-year deal with UMass to play the four or five, uh, their, their home games at, at Gillette. Um, gates will open two hours before each game. The parking is included in the price of the ticket. Uh, once we get to, uh, twelve thousand five hundred fans, we'll begin, uh, parking across, we think we'll get to twelve thousand five hundred fans, we'll park across the street as well. P-ten operations, so we'll have police detail and crossing guards, et cetera. Uh, we anticipate about fifteen thousand people per game. We'll be using, using just the one hundred level in the East Club, no mezzanine and no, uh, West Club. Uh, we think the, the range will go from eight thousand fans up to, you know, maybe twenty-five, thirty thousand fans as, um, they're better established in the MAC. We hope to have bigger home games, but for, for two thousand and twelve, we think we'll average, um, about fifteen thousand people. A couple of games, though, could, could be doubleheaders on October twentieth. We'll have a, a noon UMass game and a seven-thirty PM Revolution game followed the next day with the new, the Patriots playing at four-fifteen the next day. And then on November seventeenth, depending on how well the Revolution, uh, advance in the playoffs and what seed they are, we could again have a, uh, have two games on, on that day. We will have liaisons with the UMass community, fraternity, sororities, alumni groups, et cetera, um, promoting the event. We're involved in, in promotion for, partnering with, uh, UMass. So, um, we don't expect to have the problems that we, or problems, but some of the issues that we had with, uh, UMass and UNH with, uh, the fans, those fans coming down. Um, we think this will be targeted mostly to the alumni. There's about ninety-two thousand alumni within driving distance of, uh, Gillette Stadium. So those are the folks we're going after.
Good. Thank you. Advisory committee?
No, nothing really new that, but we did spend some time talking about, um, the whole busing people in and the issues around busing. And the chief was involved in, in talking, uh, with that in conjunction with Dan. And the concern about, you know, drinking on the bus and coming in. And, and I think there's a partnership going on, not only with the stadium, but I know the chief on that issue. And, uh, and that's one of our concerns. But at the same time, it seems like it's being handled, um, as far as a, a pretty buttoned-up operation on that, as best you can with buses showing up. But all the buses will be located in one area. I think we talked about that at the, at the meeting. And I think that's one of the keys of trying to corral some of the, uh, activity.
Because this is a new type of event, we will have, uh, stadium committee members observing. Do you get a feel for what's happening with this particular type of... Do you get a feel for what's happening with this particular type of event? We don't anticipate any problems, but we want to get a feel for it.
Now, is that advisory committee in the stadium, or in the parking lot, or both?
Both.
Both, okay. Board members, Linda?
I think it's great. I think it's great for the players and the fans, so look forward to it.
Jenny?
All set.
Lorraine?
All set.
And Mark?
Good.
Very good. Have a motion to close the hearing?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Dick? Sorry.
Just a quickie on one of the items that we're already discussing, the overtime and detail routines. As I've expressed for some time, the overtime and the amount of public safety that we are involved with, if we add in the detail hours, we begin to accentuate it in a very heavy fashion. I'm wondering how the board feels when you have three games on one weekend, plus the normal overtime that occurs, and it's followed up, I don't know if there's a game the following weekend or the previous weekend, a single game or whatever. What are we really getting into from a public safety point of view? How many outside townies or non-townies will be involved in this? Can we control the number of hours that these people are working? Just from the public safety and the liability issue, which is apparent, because we pay the details with our checks, not the, the stadium doesn't pay them with their liability, it's our liability, whether we like it or not. Thank you.
Okay, I hear you. I think two different issues. One, I mean, you guys have an event, you need the security, you pay, however it gets around, but you pay for the responsibility for the police officers. I think the sec, the question you have, Dick, is more of a town issue, not the applicant's issue, and that issue is coming up, the same thing that we did with the fire department in looking at their overtime and their way of working, we're going to be doing that with the police as well. So I understand the question, but it's not to be discussed really appropriately at this event, it's more of a town issue, I believe.
Well, I agree.
Not a town issue, but a town...
It's the impact on our people and the town as far as having to run an ambulance, and they're all tied up, and the guys have been tied up for the last three nights, you know? What does it involve for public safety, for the benefit of Foxborough residents? We're primary, they're secondary, I don't care how you analyze it.
I understand. And I don't want to speak for the board, do you have anything to?
I think that the Chiefs can speak for themselves, but, you know, public safety has always been a concern, it's always been brought up at any meeting that we have for any license that come in front of us, so, and we are just as responsible in caring for our visitors that come into town, and not just the residents, but I know that either of the Chiefs would not leave this town without an ambulance to get to, you know, E Street, so if the Chiefs want to reassure our folks at home, please do.
Well, I think there's actually two different discussions, and I have to agree with the Chairman on it, but in regards to public safety, and we've, for looking at this event, it's a new event, there might be some underage drinking, we've already discussed it with everybody, that we might bring on extra ambulances from Fallon, just to make sure that we are covered with private ambulances at that event for that type of situation, so that our ambulances are not going to be involved with that stadium event, so that they're protecting our community.
You know, Mr. Haynek has constantly brought up the issue about overtime and details, and in particular, the hours worked. I monitor very closely the hours of consecutive duty, because it could have an impact both on the safety of the public, as well as the safety of my staff, and that is also one of my priorities, to make sure that we don't have people that are so exhausted they cannot make the proper judgment, which is a crucial factor in our role in society. So we monitor it very closely. Yes, we do bring in outside officers, because we don't have an adequate complement of suburban community to deal with these things, but I don't perceive that it poses an extra threat to any of our residents, nor the visitors that come to events.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else from the public?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Made by Mark, seconded by Linda?
Lorraine.
Lorraine. All those in favor?
Aye.
Five, nothing. Motion on the action of the application?
I move that we approve the 2012 UMass football home games to be held at Gillette Stadium.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Five, nothing, Pauline. Thank you. Actually, a couple minutes early in the public hearing.
I'm good, Randy? Mr. Chairman, you got a couple folks here for different, for a couple of the action items, if you can, I think there's somebody here on the, there's a change of manager in there.
Is the manager for?
The Bluefin?
The Bluefin?
Yes. Want to take that real quick?
Sure.
Yeah, I'm sorry, guys, you want to just step back a minute? We just can't open it up before noted time.
This would be?
Eight, 25. So a change of manager at the Bluefin, the Bass Pro, so I assume you're James Camerata?
Yep.
Welcome, thank you. So in your packet, there's a lot of boxes on it, halfway through.
That's, at the Bluefin, it's a public hearing at 8:25. Change of manager at the Bluefin Lounge, Bass Pro Shops, a public hearing at 8:25, it's not an action item.
It's not an action item.
No.
It's an actual scheduled public hearing.
The action item may be with Red Robin.
Why don't you take two minutes to get up back, and then the other guys come, and we're almost at eight o'clock.
Are you talking about Red Robin?
Sorry about that.
Maybe somebody else waiting?
No, you know what, it's, we'll start it, that's fine.
Let's start the hearing, it's, that clock is probably off by a minute and a half.
I'm sorry, guys, you want to...
All right, so come on back in a minute. You're comfortable there, right?
I don't make the rules, we just muddle them up.
That was good, that ate up the two minutes, that's perfect.
Little exercise in a minute or just something.
I'll read slowly.
A little aerobic, it was great.
Didn't even get cold.
Catch Mark and see that. Okay, hearing notice?
All right. The Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 140, Section 181 and Section 183A, and Chapter 136, Section 4, Town of Foxborough Revised Bylaws, Article 5, Section 6, and also Stadium Rules and Regulations, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, June 12, 2012, beginning at 8:00 PM in the Andrew A. Gala Junior Meeting Room, 40 South Street, to review the applications submitted by NPS LLC for the 2012 New England Patriots Home Games. These events are proposed for Gillette Stadium. Application for these events is on file at the Office of Selectmen. All interested parties are welcome to attend. Board of Selectmen, Foxborough, Massachusetts.
Okay, so in this packet, we also have the application, we have the conditions, and sign-off, and letters from police, fire, Board of Health, and Stadium Advisory Committee. Dan?
Okay, really, not much has changed operationally between now and 2011. We're applying for the two preseason games, eight regular season games, up to two home playoff games, and the open house, this resident season ticket open house that we have every August. Parking lots, same, four hours before, stadium gates, two hours, same attendance levels, traffic patterns, where we try to have the people coming from the north park in the northern most lots, and the same with the south. All those operations are same, it will be in place again with the signage and cooperation with Mass Highway, which runs the highway, the highway signs on 495, 95, and on Route Maybe one small change we have is that we have a Monday Night Football preseason game this year on August 20th, I mentioned earlier. And then just internally, we've had a few changes to our internal ring road that we implemented last year to improve the flow of traffic around the outer ring of the stadium, better for fans, better for public safety, better access for load-in for concerts and load-out, et cetera, so, but other than that, there's really no operational changes at all.
Okay. There's one thing that you mentioned, and it's a benefit to the residents, but could you repeat that again and explain that benefit to the residents of being able to come to the preseason or the practices?
It is an open...
I'm not sure if everyone understands that.
Yeah, every year, we have an open practice that we invite residents of Foxborough, we have tickets at various, we had at various locations, we had at the library, the Public Safety Building, I believe Town Hall, and residents can come and get tickets, and come to the open practice. It's usually in August, but the coach will pick that date once we get into training camp.
Fantastic, thanks. Advisory Committee?
I think the only other thing that we talked about, and Chief Hatfield kind of brought it up, was the whole practice sessions that happens, and the stadium is working closer with him on what's needed to happen when, you know, 10,000 to 20,000 people show up at a training event, which will probably generate even more interest this year than other years.
The fire chief has a staffing plan based on different levels and event types, so it's really needing to know, you know, is it going to be 15, is it going to be 20, is it going to be 25,000? Which, those different levels that he uses determine which first aid stations are manned. That's the key thing. So, and it's, that is really one of those last-minute things, we're not really sure till almost an hour before the event starts, is exactly how many people are going to be there.
Okay. Questions from the board? Linda?
I don't have any questions, no.
Jenny?
No.
And Lorraine?
No.
Just one comment, on December 30th, playing Miami, Ojo Cinco staying at my house.
Tweeting.
Anyone else have intelligent questions from the audience?
I move that we close the public hearing.
Motion made, seconded?
Second.
Motion on an action?
Move that we approve the 2012 New England Patriots...
We need to vote.
Oh, sorry, we didn't vote on like closing that.
We need to vote.
All those in favor of the motion to close?
Really want to close it?
Five, nothing, Pauline, sorry. Go ahead, Linda, sorry.
As I was saying, I move that we approve the 2012 New England Patriots Home Games at Gillette Stadium.
Okay, motion to approve, seconded?
Second.
Lorraine, questions?
I just wanted to ask a question about Walpole again, and in terms of licensing, the, you know, the similar impacts that happen to traffic during the games, is that something that we should consider in the same way that we just did that with the other, the Country Fest, where there's a large crowd? You know how we had a contingent on input from everybody? It's like the typical input, but I think it's just making it official that we're including Walpole.
Well, they're in the room.
Can I speak to that?
Sure.
About probably four years ago, Michael called me, and I went over and met with him and the fire chief and the police chief, and they asked for certain details at certain locations, and, you know, the immediate answer was yes. We speak, Michael and I speak three or four or five times a year, we speak before any major event. I think any, well, I let him speak, but anything he's ever asked for, for tweaking any details, whether it's across Route 1 or on the Walpole side of Route 1, we've always put in place whatever they needed.
Okay. You okay, Michael? You want to speak, or?
The, just...
Yeah, I hate to, you got to use a microphone, though, because we get yelled at.
Linda will yell at you.
Well, Mike, you yell at them, and I yell at you.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Dan's Correct, I mean, we absolutely have a very positive working relationship. A few years ago, with Dan's Correct, we went so far as to have to implement a traffic management plan in South Walpole because of significant backups that were occurring. Again, that has changed, we've had some positive results. We, for example, still deploy DPW workers a couple of hours before games to deploy signs to keep folks away from the neighborhoods and keep them on state-numbered routes. I think the question from Lorraine is, does it hurt us? No, I mean, it would certainly, again, we were very appreciative that you considered Walpole's needs as part of the licensing for Country Fest. I would anticipate that if, that we will still have a working relationship with the stadium, and again, that's, most appreciative that you would consider adding anything to assist Walpole, certainly.
Thanks, Mike. All right, so a motion was made, seconded, any more discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve?
Aye.
Five, nothing. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Good luck.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think we may have narrowed down who's here for action items, although I'm still 100% sure, because we're not sure, but there may be somebody here from the Red Robin on extended alcohol service hours. Anybody? Yes, no?
For the residents and...
I'm sorry?
Residents and for a liquor license.
Oh, for the, yeah, we could, why don't you come up?
We could do that.
Yeah, why don't you come up?
Michelle?
Julia Trobiano.
Julia?
I was supposed, my general manager had a family emergency.
Okay, so it's item 10 on the action?
One-day wine and malt license for the family.
Yes.
Great.
Is that the first one, go? Yes.
Looks like this, everybody.
Ah, there we go, okay. So the residents in is asking for a one-day wine and malt for July 12th for a grand reopening event? Do you want to, I guess, introduce yourself and explain what the request is?
Sure. I'm Julia Trobiano, Assistant General Manager, and we just went through a complete renovation, so we're just going to have a grand opening, and basically, it's just new clients, existing clients, just coming to view the new brand rooms and the new lobby.
Okay, any questions from the board?
I didn't have any on the application.
No?
Motion to approve?
Any more questions, anybody?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any more discussion? Motion made and seconded? Anyone from the audience?
Where's the residents in?
Patriots' place.
No, it's not, it's, that's the Renaissance.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's the Renaissance, you know?
I know, I wronged you, it's right, um, it's right next to the courtyard.
It'll be good to see what you did. Yeah.
It's gorgeous.
Very good. I wish you the best of luck. Well, let's vote on it, so.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Five, nothing, Pauline. Thank you very much.
Good luck, thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience that's waiting for something?
Is there anybody else here on any licensing or anything that's not on the agenda, on the action list instead? No? Okay, great, I guess that was the only one.
And the hearing is for?
Bond acceptance with Randy.
Well, what time?
We have to wait till 8:25, so 15 minutes is too early to start.
Sorry, Jim.
Okay, Randy, are you ready?
Thanks. Evening. Here to discuss the acceptance of the low bid on the library and water projects bond So I have the bond offering results. We completed the bidding process for the offering of $12,895,000 in 20-year bonds related to the library renovation and expansion, and that portion was $7,95,000, and that's excluded debt. Then we had the portion associated with the Oak Street Water Treatment Plant, that was $5.8 million, supported by water rates. The library project was originally authorized to borrow $7.5 million, but this was reduced, as you recall, by $405,000 at the last annual town meeting, by applying our excess operating budget revenues towards the project, as per our plan and policy. The water project was originally authorized to borrow $7 million, but this was reduced by applying $382,000 in available water capital funds at the last annual town meeting, and due to competitive project bidding. So, in essence, we were authorized to borrow for these two projects $14.5 million, and we borrowed $1.6 million less than that, you know, for those reasons. So that alone, the fact that we're borrowing $1.6... So that alone, the fact that we're borrowing $1.6 million less, is, even at the very low interest rates that are being bid here, save the taxpayers and the ratepayers, over $1.5 million, just that alone, in addition to the $1.6 million that we won't, we won't need to put towards the projects. The offering received five bids ranging from 2.914% to 3.079. The bids were received on June 6th, that's a range of 17 basis points, so it was very tight bidding, so this is a very competitive, very competitive showing. The other bidder, the low bidder was Janey Montgomery Scott LLC out of Pennsylvania with the effective rate of 2.914085%, and they were the ones who actually were the low bidders on our refunding bonds of about $5.2 million three and a half months ago. So they're, they like the Foxborough issue. The other bidders included Roosevelt and Cross, Raymond James Associates, Eastern Bank, and Hutchison Shockey Early and Company. We had planned initially, not knowing what the market was going to bear and, you know, what we might achieve, we had planned an interest rate of 3.5%, which was still a pretty darn good rate for 20-year bonds of this size, but by achieving the 2.91, effectively, so now we have a net savings to plan, and the net savings to the town is $648,000 compared to plan, and it accrues in the following way. We have the excluded debt library issue, so there's $357,000 that will save, according to plan, over the 20-year life of the bond, direct savings to the taxpayer, and then the water debt will save $290,000 in interest costs to plan, again, over the life of the bond as well. And then prior to the close of the bidding, Standard and Poor's reaffirmed our bond rating of AA+. AA ratings are termed excellent, we're at the upper tier of that. Foxborough's only one of 15 Massachusetts municipalities with that rating. In fact, we, the state has that rating as well, they're AA+, and they just got an upgrade, I think it was back in, in November. There's only one higher rating than that, and that's AAA with about 20 communities having achieved that. I do also have these, the offering statements, the official statements, and these are just for your, for your reference, it's, it actually is, not for tonight, but it's actually some pretty interesting reading. I have one, I don't have one for Pauline. It's, it's what we have to prepare in order to go to market. It's, it's a lot of great information, you know, financial and otherwise-
It's for the attached tomorrow.
For the, you know, about the community, and this is in essence what goes to, to the investing community, and this is what they consume in addition to our rating, so it's, it's good reading, and the, I would normally send these out in advance, but these things aren't completed until, until we actually, I just received these, these today, and because they're interim. It's an interim until we get the rating, until we get Bond Counsel's, you know, final opinion on these things as to how they're classified, is tax exempt, et cetera. So we don't get the final, final until, until we have actually sold the bonds, and meanwhile, the investment community has seen an interim, and then they get the final. So I thought I'd share the final with you, just, just so you have it for your, for your reference. And I'm happy to take any questions, and certainly I would recommend that, that the Board would vote to accept the low bidder, Janey Montgomery Scott at the 2.914%, and I do have a formal motion, which I have for Lorraine as well, but I'd have to take any questions on the, on the bond sale.
Thank you, Randy. Start with Linda, any questions?
No, it's, it's, 1. what?
Two, I wish it was 1, 2.914.
2.914.
20-year bonds.
But how much is the savings overall to the taxpayers? Was it 1. something?
We were, we were assuming 3.5%.
Right.
And so that savings there is, is $648,000.
Right, so that's good news for us.
Yeah, good news, and we were already in the, in the good news category with, you know, we're borrowing $1.6 million less, and-
Yep.
So we're, you know, trying to bring the, all of these projects in as tight as we can, so we, I think we delivered with the, with the debt issuance.
Nice.
Janie?
Yeah, I like this report, it was very interesting.
Yep, there's, there's two more of those on the website, finance section under revenue, the credit rating we received three and a half months ago, and the one we received two years prior to that, so they're, they're all there, and that one's on there as well, so everybody can read that on the finance revenue page.
It's still responsibility. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I was just going to say congratulations again on AA+, and this is really interesting reading, the summary about the general obligation, gives a lot of good background on the town, it's very good.
Mark?
Thank you.
And also share that the rationale and outlook that Standard and Poor's put together specifically for Foxborough, I think it speaks to the hard work of the finance, but the conservative nature of Foxborough over the past year, so it's, it's very impressive.
And they, the fact, I hadn't seen this in the last two ratings, but they also give a two-year stable outlook, you know, with this, and I think the one caveat they had is as long as we continue to come forward with, you know, with, you know, balanced budgets.
All right, so do you have a motion?
I did, a formal motion, I'm going to-
Oh, I'm sorry, Kevin, you wanted to-
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, I just wanted to take a moment to add my congratulations of that of the Board, Randy and his staff. I'm sure the Board's aware that there were, there was a whole round of bond downgrades in Massachusetts last year and the year before. A lot of the AAA's got downgraded, a lot of the AA pluses got downgraded. Foxborough, thanks to the good work that Randy does, to the conservative posture of the AdCom, conservative posture of this Board, and ultimately, the people in the town meeting, and the hard work of the department heads and other employees, were now one of the best rated communities, were one of the top 35 rated communities in the state of Massachusetts out of 351 cities and towns. That is a heck of an accomplishment, and it really, the bulk of the thanks really goes to Randy and the work that he does to advise us. You know, a lot of times when we're hearing all that complicated stuff he's doing in the fall, when we kick the budget process off, everybody glazes over, understandable, but the, at the end of the day, the result of all that stuff is this, and this is an extremely significant achievement. If you translate it into dollars, if we had slipped just one point, we could easily have seen three or four or five or 600 basis points higher rates, which translates into hundreds of thousands of dollars in cost to the taxpayers. So this is a significant accomplishment, and I just wanted to take a moment to recognize that and say thank you, and I'm going to give this to the press in the hopes that they will do a story on it and help spread the good news. Thank you.
Pauline has a copy of the motion that- And before we make a motion, is there anyone in the audience that has any questions or want to add anything? Okay, like to entertain a motion?
I, the clerk of the Board of Selectmen of the town of Foxborough, move to accept the form of vote as recommended by Bond Counsel and further incorporate that written motion into this one. Said form of vote authorizes the $12.895 million, million dollar bond offering and resulting sale of bonds for the purpose of renovating and expanding the Boydton Library and constructing a water treatment plant on Oak Street to Janey Montgomery Scott LLC at the average effective interest rate of 2.914%, and affirms the town's required compliance obligations in connection with this bond sale.
Second.
Motion made by Lorraine, seconded by Linda. Any more discussion? All those in favor of the motion?
Right.
I have opposed, zero.
Fantastic, yeah, you'll probably, will probably want to do these at 9:15 or after, because I need about 30, 3 dozen of you John Hancock's on all the, all the bonds, et cetera, so I'll bring these back.
At what time?
At about 9:15.
So that's what time we're leaving, that's good, that's good. That sounds good, thanks. I'm holding you to it, Randy.
All right, great.
All right, thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
8:20.
Wow, 8:20.
Yeah, running-
Payson Road speed limit?
Go to the Payson Road speed limit, we're town manager, 8:30.
Is there anyone here that, that brought up the issue of the Payson Road? Okay, why don't you come up, we can, we can handle that, thank you. One of you, Matt Monahan?
Yes.
Okay.
And Mike Casey.
Mike Casey, man behind the emails. I'll give you a quick recap, these gentlemen reached out to the Selectmen shortly after the paving was redone on Payson Road, sidewalks were in, you good gentlemen live on Payson, on Payson Road?
Correct.
And the question was, there was speed limit signs that were put up that said 35, you are seeing that the traffic in your perspective is going much faster than 35, is there something the town can do? And from our side, you know, we can't just willy-nilly change signs, what's the process for it? So we reached out to the Police Chief, and we reached out to Roger Hill, and just got an understanding of what a sign means, the enforceability, what dictates the speed limit, and, you know, can we change it? So Roger put together his thoughts, and basically from reading through this, the signs that are up there say 35, it's a recommended speed of 35. The Board has the ability to change the signs to 25 if we think it's warranted, it's, it's a recommended speed of 25. So at the end of the day, if someone's going down 40, he gets a ticket, it might not be enforceable, but it says 25, and that is kind of sometimes more important, getting everything to slow down. So I have some thoughts on Payson Road, because I use it 10 times a day and we do sports off there, but before we go to the Board, is there anything that I said you want to expand on?
Everything seems accurate to me.
Roger's email sent it all.
If you could just introduce yourself and your address for the record.
Matt Monahan, 44 Payson Road.
And I'm Mike Casey, I'm at 40 Payson Road.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Jeffrey Waller, I actually live on North Street between Payson and the Public Safety Building, so just kind of directly behind that.
In between, okay.
Right, so I'm just kind of here, I know, obviously, North is a little different, that's a straightaway, and so, and obviously it's not on the table, but just a kind of a concern, it's always been a concern, I've been on that street, was the first house sitting on that street of that new area built, so I've been there about six years, so, and I, I think the speed looks the same, my understanding is 35, and, and, you know, it's, it's not on the agenda, but I figured I'd want to come and support the neighbors, and I know the ball fields is a, is a, is a big, it makes sense for that area to change the speed limit, I just don't know if, in the future, if anything with the North Street, especially in that area with the straightaway, I know when those signs were probably posted, it was a different area, not built up, and more of a cut-through, and I think speed is always a concern, and now you have the, in that area have crosswalks that are going to have the Lawton Lane, Highland Farm, houses and families crossing over to the ball fields, and the one in particular, which is directly behind Mr. Casey's house, is with the crest of that hill where you go down where North meets Payson, you know, there's going to be some concern there, because this is going to be a crosswalk there, they just put in the sidewalks today, actually, and, you know, I, I think there should be some sort of traffic mitigation, what is, is the question? You know, is it a speed limit change to help deter the speed, or, you know, removable speed bumps or some sort of tabletops? I know, you know, a lot of its in the plans or, you know, still being discussed, but, you know, based off, just wrapping up, I just think that, you know, maybe that part of North Street or North Street maybe do for a change as well, but I also recognize that it's a different type of street than, than the Payson thing.
All right, and if you will, we'll focus on Payson today, and then North Street for a different day, but probably the same outreach that we did for Payson, we can talk to the DPW Director, and maybe the Planning Board also, because they've been involved with rotary, no rotary change, so there's a long history there.
There's been a lot discussed there.
That's what I was just going to say, with Payson came, now it's supposed to be rotary, and the prior Board voted 3-2 not to do it, and then they came up with the T in the section, so that, as far as mitigation, we've already been down that road.
Right, I agree, I remember, yeah, I remember.
It was a very difficult process.
And we had islands in the middle of the roads with trees and budgets, and there's a, a year worth of pros and cons on that. But with respect to Payson, any discussion from the Board, questions or thoughts?
I would think that, there's a lot of detoured traffic flying down that road right now. I would hope with the completion of the other road, it'll ease up having this much traffic as it has on it now, because it's, I get detoured down with it today, again.
Sidewalks are put in today, that's why you were detoured, but those should be-
And they're almost complete with that, I think it would relieve a lot of the traffic there at that point. I'd, I'd be appeased to knock it down to 30 right off the bat, myself, and 35 seems like a little faster, that road, it's typically 30 on, on roads that are straighter than that and, and not as well populated. If you go down South Street, or you go over 495, it's 30 there, and that's-
Exactly.
Five, I mean, that's a strip, I mean, you don't even realize how fast you're going down that road until you look down, there's a police speeding notification signs up there right now, and not to throw myself on the bus, every time I look at my speedometer, I'm doing like 40 miles an hour and a 30 because it's downhill, so you tend to pay more attention, maybe we get that relocated there, and I won't have to look at it on South Street anymore.
You know, I think arguably speaking, it's, they're different neighborhoods too, though.
Right, absolutely, that one's a 36-foot wide road, and there's, there's no, there's houses, but there's spas spaced apart.
And I think part of what I'm hoping is resolved is that when all of the, you know, I was really involved when we didn't get the real T to the end woods there and things like that, I was involved in that discussion, and it ended up being the way it is, and it is better, I'm not going to say that's not, it is better than it was, but, you know, one of the things that was promised to those of us, which were in the major majority of wanting more of a major change at that intersection at the end where Payson meets North, is that don't worry, it'll be traffic calming measures, that will be in this plan, that were in the plan, and now we have a nice, beautifully smooth road that cars can travel very nicely down at a very rapid rate of speed, and I, and I know I've been promised that there's these removable speed bumps coming in, but it's just, I, I kind of feel as if, you know, that was one thing that was said as a quote-unquote compromise, is that there will be traffic calming measures, that will be part of this plan, and the whole buildup happened, and finish work happened, and I feel that the lack of the inclusion of those was not really kind of populated to the neighborhood, we had neighborhood meetings out there saying that we're not going to make the significant change that the 10 families that wanted, and the one person that was leaving didn't want, we didn't get that, but we were promised traffic calming measures that have yet to materialize, and then we get the 35 mile per hour speed limit sign posted up there. And I can tell you, which is nice, I said to my wife the other day, there's a lot more foot traffic and people walking because of the sidewalks, which is wonderful. Well, with that comes the inherent obligation, I would believe, of making sure that we minimize risk, and especially considering the fact that this is not just a Foxborough issue, and that there's a state, there's a bill in the House right now, considering whether or not we make all community residential speed limits 25 miles per hour, I mean, there's reasoning behind that, and there's many states in the United States that have that as law, so that may be something that's changing as well, and something I had said in my emails, why don't, why don't we propose to be on the forefront of that? I think it's unfortunate that it's not potentially enforceable, you know, but I think most motorists wouldn't necessarily know that, and I think that getting the speed limit change is one thing, and I just hope that these traffic calming measures that were promised as part of this project materialize.
Okay. Linda?
Well, I was, yeah, I was going to mention the fact about the bill in legislature, and that we should reach out to our folks and, you know, see where that stands and make sure that they support that, because you're not alone, folks, you understand that?
Absolutely.
And, you know, our town is growing, and the little roads are becoming cut-through roads for, you know, if there's a such, you know, we've, you know, even Oak Street, we've, you know, we're, we're, that's a situation, and we're hearing it more and more, so I think that something needs to be done, I'm not sure if different signs are going to do it or not, and I don't think they're done down there with traffic calming measures, I don't think that's finished.
We hope they're not done, but we were told the tabletop is not getting put in.
Right, the tabletops, at this point, we were told officially are not going in, and that's something that, I think some people on this Board, were on that Board too, and that was, that was promised about there being tabletop intersections as part of that development.
Tabletop is quick, tabletop as you go up, over, and then back down, so people slow down, but it's not a-
And there's supposed to be two, one at the end of Neff Drive, and one at, basically in front of where the state wouldn't sell that house forever, I don't know, that was really strange, so pretty close, like within 100 yards of one another, and that was something that was, on repeated occasions, said was part of the project, was in the plans of the project, and then I just noticed the rough coat went down, the, the final coat went down, and then I contacted Sharon, and was like, where's the tabletops that were part of the plan? And, you know-
Have you spoken to the Planning Board about it?
I was told that there was a meeting, I'm not sure if it was a Selectmen meeting or a Planning Board meeting, where Roger Hill had voiced his concern about the fact, and I, I'm not going to Roger Hill, he does this for a living, but he had voiced his concern about the fact that pavement, tabletops get torn up with plows and, and stuff like that.
Yeah, yeah.
And I guess it's just the fact that I don't really feel like there's a reach out to the neighborhood to say, oh, by the way, this has changed. And now we're kind of left with then this posted thirty-five and where the traffic calming measures that, I mean, that was, that wasn't even in the paper, the quote-unquote compromise plan that involved traffic calming measures. That was in the press.
Right.
And now we weren't informed of the change. The street now exists with a posted thirty-five mile per hour speed limit with more pedestrian people in the neighborhood. There's more condos going up. There's events all the time down there. And so, you know, it kind of feels as if we've been hit from two sides. One with the posted thirty-five, two with the fact that, you know, again, going back to that, there was ten families in favor of more of a drastic change. And the quote-unquote compromise was traffic calming that has now not materialized. And we're promised that there's some removal rubber things that Cambridge has had experience with. But, I mean, I can go search my work email and that was three weeks ago at least with those emails back and forth with Sharon. And she has said they're supposed to be here in three weeks. And this is on Sharon. I'm just saying that I'm concerned that we're being kind of yes to death. And things that were promised and literally on paid-for plans of the build were then rescinded without the neighborhood knowing. And what's going to happen if there's ever money for the completion of the fields involved with even more flow into that neighborhood than there is already of children? Let alone the fact that overarching, there is this larger concept that twenty-five miles per hour in a residential neighborhood is a good idea, both nationally and in the State House. I think, you know, it would behoove many of us to say, well, why don't we on the forefront? Say, yeah, we're going to post twenty-five. It's not enforceable until that State House bill were to pass. But at least it's posted. And in the meantime, excuse me, but where the hell are these speed bumps that we were promised?
Can we look into that, Kevin, and find out?
I think what you said is absolutely accurate. Roger appeared at the Planning Board and expressed his concern because unfortunately, and he wasn't here when that design was done.
So where, who is in control of the speed bumps?
What he did tell them was that those so-called tabletop speed bumps or plateau speed bumps destroy snowplows. They also create liability.
They were told about these other temporary speed bumps. So that's what I'm asking. Can we find out where they are?
I'm sorry, say that again, Linda?
The temporary speed bumps that they're talking about?
The rubber ones.
The rubber ones.
They have them in Sharon.
You're talking about the drag-across ones?
Well, you put them up and they get yellow, they're painted yellow, they're black, they're rubber, they're...
Yeah. Yeah, I've seen them.
They're all over the place and especially in private resident, like private roads. They have them in Sharon on, after Shores, you take that right in there. They're up by the soccer fields. They have them exactly at the soccer fields there. It's, I don't think the town owns any, but they're movable. You can put them wherever you want. You take them out in the snow season.
So what Sharon had said in the email was that, she mentioned Cambridge for some reason because I guess Roger had cited Cambridge as having used these and been happy with them because they can remove them in the wintertime. And it didn't sound like, you know, I think of a speed bump typically as when you're going into a Hearn school with those, you know, that thing that's maybe eighteen inches deep and huge up and down. But it sounded like it was a rubber, I don't know how many feet deep sort of plateau just made out of rubber.
About that wide, not wide.
It's five feet wide and six inches in elevation.
So, you know, and I would say that too is drastically different than what the neighborhood was told was the compromise that I hope, surely hope became an under budget considering they didn't have to build those plateaus times two. And, you know, that's a whole separate issue. But, you know, that was in the build plans. And then, you know, I mean, I've been in contact with another town manager in what I do for work. And, I mean, it was his opinion that that concern about quote-unquote destroying plows is, it's more of a major inconvenience because they have to slow down, but they can set their blades a little higher because they know these streets like the back of their hands, which is, you know, Roger Hill's been doing this for thirty-odd, forty years.
It's not just plows. It's fire trucks too. I mean, we've been through this whole thing for...
But with all due respect, when those build plans happened, those had to be considered by Public Safety. And it was determined by Public Safety that we will allow those to be in the build plans. So I feel like that's kind of trying to go backwards on that argument. And, I mean, if you go to major metropolitan areas like Alexandria, Virginia, I've been there many times, they have tabletop intersections. I'm sorry, but Alexandria, Virginia is a much busier place in Foxborough, Massachusetts in terms of emergency vehicles. And if, I'd say if a major metropolitan area like that is able to cope with tabletop intersections, I certainly believe Foxborough, Massachusetts should be able to, which I said long ago. So in terms of public safety, that had to be considered at the time that those build plans were made.
Okay. I get your point. Jenny?
I had to go down the detour on Payson Road today. And I was a little surprised that the speed was thirty-five because I go by South Street and it is thirty down there. So, and it's, I didn't realize how residential Payson Road is becoming.
And there's not ball fields down on South Street.
Right, I think ball fields separate us where Mike was saying...
Plus playgrounds.
Playground. It's an increased use of the field with, girls' lacrosse is now down there every single day, every single weekend.
Were you quoted a speed limit of thirty-five when you...
The speed limit was actually never discussed during the plans of the build. What was a huge focus was the fact that there will be traffic calming measures and they were on that build plan.
What determines thirty-five for a road like that?
I apologize. I honestly don't know what happened.
Residential thirty, thirty miles an hour residential or thickly populated is the standard.
So that was just a standard that was thrown into the plan?
But it's not even a standard because we're at thirty-five.
Thirty's the standard. Thirty-five is posted.
Because when I would turn on, because I went down South Street and I was like, wait, South Street's thirty. And I consider it a much different road than one with all the ball fields and playgrounds.
I was surprised. Plus with new paving?
Oh, yeah, it's beautiful. It's beautiful. It's nice and smooth.
Get a skateboard.
You're good. One of those big waveboards, you know?
When I first saw the request or, you know, the email about this, I do think that twenty-five is reasonable on that street because there is so much stop and go into the different areas of activity. And so, you know, I was totally in favor of putting those signs up once Roger said it wasn't something that involved a traffic study or anything like that. So I'm fine with that. I think the concern really is the additional calming measures that can be done in the meantime or anyway because that was part of the original plan.
Those traffic calming devices are under the control of the Planning Board. And I, I don't know what happened because if they were on the plan and they were supposed to be built and they didn't, I suspect you're right. I suspect Roger went down there and told them that he didn't think they were workable and they must have changed it. I'm just surmising this. I don't know that for fact. On the twenty-five mile an hour speed limit, the board can vote that because whether it's thirty-five, thirty or twenty-five, none of them are legally enforceable. The only way they're legally enforceable is if we do the traffic study. And I will also caution you, like Roger, I've done a bunch of them, and that will end up being a forty mile an hour zone.
Exactly. You could be careful what you wish for, right?
It's set at the eighty-fifth percentile of what traffic actually goes without any signage. You take the signage down, you put the pneumatic thing up there, you measure the traffic any multiple...
That was, I'm just going to keep moving because we've covered that.
I think your best bet is to decide what you want the speed to be.
I was heading in that direction. I just got to keep it moving a little bit.
Just that our public library is temporarily there right now. There's a lot of children running across the road. And I would just move that we, I know it's enforceable, make the motion to knock it right down to thirty right now. And we'll, you know, revisit it in a month.
Let's see.
That's what I'd like to do.
My opinion is, I think it's a, it's in, twenty-five is reasonable in that area. It's not, it's not a long road that you're getting inconvenience. It's not like you're going for a mile. You've got a state institutional house that's up there that's not fully occupied or, we don't know the full extent of that yet. We've got boys and girls varsity sports that they're driving there. We've got the youth football. We've got youth lacrosse, which we're bringing in all different towns and buses. And it's a cut-through.
And it's children, and a toddler playground.
Yep. So you've got the majority of the people that don't live there, they're just visiting. You go there in a weekend and people, when the game gets out, they want to get the heck out of there. If they're late for the game, they want to get there really quick. So I think it's a no-brainer for twenty-five.
We've now built sidewalks on both roads inviting pedestrian traffic.
So we've got a letter from Roger that says, in his experience, twenty-five will do it with no additional studies. You know, whether it's twenty-five or thirty, it's still, they're probably going to do forty. So twenty-five, I think, is a little more conservative.
Is it a formal motion we need, though? It's something we can take away, right? I'll make the motion that we make a speed limit on Payson Road to twenty-five miles an hour.
Second.
Any more discussion?
Oh, we have someone from planning.
Oh, Bill.
Who's the planning board?
Motion made. Bill, you want to, this is, you guys know Bill. Do you want to add anything before we...
Oh, were you talking about...
You're watching this from home, aren't you?
Of course he was. Nope, nope, nope.
Perchance I was.
Thirty seconds.
Good to see you, Bill.
Hi, I'm new to town, Phil Reader. Yes, perchance I was watching it home. Contrary to popular discussion, the Planning Board did not change the plans. Popular discussion, the Planning Board did not see the plans. That was an infield change done by Mr. Hill.
Now, change in the plans, just so we're clear, the last time I saw it, when this went, it was years ago, before my time, there was a rotary that the Planning Board recommended that got scrapped. The selectmen said do the T. The T got built, but there was some calming measures, whether it's a speed bump or there were some trees in the middle and...
There was. Started out with an island that proved to be above the budget. Came out with some platforms ala downtown Cambridge. I believe that's what was on the final approved plan. Sharon was at a workshop when the last paving was to be done, the final paving. She heard that an infield change was being proposed. She was not in town at that time, but we heard via email that an infield change was being done. Because the Planning Board approved the plans or whatever, but then the actual construction is under the purview of the Selectmen and the Highway Department. And they, Mr. Hill made the change per his expertise that there was a design issue he felt was going to be some sort of a plowing problem or whatever. So, you know, we did not see it. We did not vote on it. We did not approve any changes. It was an infield change. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Now, I'm glad you clarified that.
So that, you know, when the Globe and the, and the Washington Gazette picks this up for tomorrow's news, that it's accurate.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I didn't know you guys worked out on that whole area and it's coming down to the final cases.
Yeah, I mean, we're really, you know, we worked with the neighbors. We had a lot of discussion with them. I believe the traffic speed signage issue, once again, is within the NIS board's purview, not ours. I don't know how the, how the speed signs got posted, what that procedure is. We don't, that doesn't come in front of us at all.
Okay.
So, sure. So if, if the plateaus are eliminated, then shouldn't the speed, the speed be downgraded?
The only time that we've really had any discussion on a project with speed limits was when the skating rink went into East Belcher and we tried, as part of our process, tried to have the speed limit changed on Coccasus Street. And we found out through the Police Department, an enforcement issue, and that's where we found out the process. And you can post one thing, but if it's not enforceable, then it becomes a question of, can you post it knowing that it's not legally enforceable? So, and I don't know the answer to that. That's a Police Chief Town Manager's Town Council decision. I mean, I know like once you cite that dangerous intersection ahead, there's a whole set of responsibilities that comes in once you signage a hazard. So I don't know what it is on, you know, with regards to the speed limit. So that's, that's out of our realm. The plateaus are, from what I have been told, are an add-on anyhow. It wouldn't have been done when the road was done initially. It's not like you pave along and all of a sudden you raise the girdle of the paving machine and go up two inches or whatever.
You install them afterwards.
It's an, it's an after, you know, it's like...
After the wearing course goes on and you go back.
It's like the fuzzy dice for your rearview mirror. You buy it after you buy the car.
Really? I can't even...
So you didn't buy the fuzzy dice out, you bought it with the car?
Sure.
But I want to stress the point that those were on the final bill.
Oh, absolutely. And that's, I said they were.
And they can be done after the fact. Is that what you're saying? And you're...
That's exactly how they would be done.
Right. From what I, I mean, you could, you could put them around the common if the town decided to do that. It's an after-market product.
One last brief.
Bill, just a question. You said the Planning Board had approved the final design and had met with the neighborhood to discuss it. That was during the site plan approval process?
Yeah, for, yeah, the whole, actually it was during, it was, it was, like anything else down that neck of the woods, when it's tied into the State Hospital, it becomes a convoluted thing because it was also during the P-WED process, which then took some of the responsibility from the developer. And the town took it over because the private entity can't apply for a P-WED. A municipality had to. So in order for us to, in order for the developer to be relieved of the responsibility of doing X, they helped facilitate a P-WED grant. But the town had to apply because it's applied, it's a grant to the municipality.
So as part of the P-WED application process, plans were, and you guys looked at those and so... I think what happened here, pretty obvious, Roger being new, Roger Hill, didn't know anything about the discussions and all that. He is an engineer, sees the plan in the field. Sharon's not available, she's at a meeting. And he just makes a change on the spot because he says, this is not a good idea. This is contrary to a good engineering standard, not knowing that there had been extensive discussions. So, you know, that's unfortunate, but it is what it is. Whatever action the board takes tonight, we'll get that done. If the board wants some further investigation into these temporary speed bumps or the plateaus or whatever, you guys just say so and we'll, we'll get that.
All right. We have a motion on the board. It was seconded. Any more discussion? So the motion is to lower the speed to post it as twenty-five, as suggested speed limit. All those in favor?
Aye.
And all those opposed? No, so it's five-nothing, Pauline. Thank you. And can I ask, could you follow up with Roger and you guys stay on top of him to work with him to find out if the speed bumps need to go back in or can go back in? Also keep Chief Hatfield, because I know he's, he has big issues and I know you wanted to speak on it, but there are some concerns with the fire trucks.
And you guys got our emails, they're on the town website, so...
You guys have been great.
But that's very responsible.
And just as a further, I know the North Street, there was traffic calming, the gentleman down the end brought that up. And there was traffic calming as part of that design. And I believe there'll be some plasticizing, which I find it is a fancy way for saying painting, where they'll be doing visuals, bubbles or whatever that have proven effective. And Roger did talk with us that he's going to institute that throughout the town, not just on that particular area. So that visually you think the road is narrower than it is because of the way that it steers you. Much like on North Street coming south by Payson with the new island that's there. When it first went in and there wasn't any striping, your tendency was to drive over, right through the middle of it. And now, the approach to it with the striping, you actually.
Guide you.
Steers you over to the, to the new paved area, and it does slow people down.
Surprising what the effect it has.
Yeah, so the complaint we've heard is, you know, those damn things, you can't go as fast as you used to. Well, that's the whole point.
Yeah, definitely stop and can't veer to the right. Thank you all, appreciate it.
Thank you guys.
Everyone's happy, happy, happy.
And I tell you, the reception in Duluth is great.
All right.
Finally, can we get James up here, please? Yeah.
Public hearing.
There's no.
But there's no public reading.
There's no notice.
There's nothing to read in a public hearing.
No.
I think, Lorraine, if you just take the standard one and just change the names, you'd be fine.
Well, do we know if this was actually posted?
There's a public hearing scheduled for Bass, and there's no hearing to read. Was it posted in?
I don't think.
As far as I know, it was, I can't tell you any more than that.
But if we, I think I can wing this if you want, or I think Lorraine's pretty capable of winging it too. All you can do is take the last public hearing notice and change the names to protect the information.
But it's off or not if it wasn't in the newspaper and it wasn't.
My suggestion is you treat it as if it was, in the event that the only mistake is that the piece of paper didn't get put in there. On the other hand, if it didn't get posted, then we are gonna have to redo this. But I'd take the affirmative less approach. Hopefully we get lucky.
Lorraine, you got this, you wanna take a swing at it?
Go ahead, Mark.
All right. Board of Selecting, Act 16, License Authority, Mass. General Law, Chapter 140(c) is the alcohol, I believe, right? We'll have a public hearing to discuss the change of management at Bluefin Lounge in Bass Pro Shop, One Bass Pro Drive, manager JP Camerata. Meeting will be at the Andrew J. Junior, Andrew Gallagher Jr., Meeting Room 40 South Street to review the application submitted by Bluefin Lounge, One Bass Pro Drive, Foxville, Patriots Place. All interested parties are invited to attend.
It wasn't, I just, if you look on here, I don't believe that it was ever meant to be publicized or this whole thing.
I can go look at the notice board out there.
Okay.
Well, you know, it's not gonna change anything, so let's just go through it.
All right.
If it's, if we were in error, you're gonna come, have to come back in two weeks, if right, happy birthday.
But we'll put you out first, I promise.
It's not the posting on the bulletin board that matters, it's the posting in the paper.
Okay.
That's the actual public notice, so if it was in, we're good, if it wasn't, we have to redo it.
Yeah, might not have to advertise it. So let's go through it, and if we're wrong, it's good practice. We're wrong the next time. So Mr. Camerata, just introduce yourself and get kind of, give an overview of your qualifications and what you're here for tonight.
Okay, my name is James Camerata, I'm the new general manager of the Bluefin Lounge, located on the lower level of the Bass Pro Shop at One Bass Pro Drive in Patriots Place. I've been there for about three weeks now, going through this application process, and have forty years of restaurant experience encompassing full alcohol, beer and wine, with no incidences to report over the past thirty-five, forty years being in the restaurant business. I expect to continue that record, upholding the Bass Pro brand down at the Bluefin Lounge. We're a family-oriented business, a lot of children. We close at nine PM with the retail store, so we're not there for midnight, one, two o'clock in the morning. So we should have absolutely no problem as far as any type of alcohol problems are concerned.
Great. Turn it over to the board for questions, Mark? Lorraine?
I'm all set, thanks.
Ginny?
I'll sit.
I didn't see anything.
And I won't be redundant, because there's really no questions, but just overall, if you've been in town, if you live town and you follow the alcohol issues, if you wanna call, we take a very hard-nosed, line approach to issues of over-serving, serving underage.
Absolutely.
I'm sure in your thirty to forty years, you well understand that, but.
Absolutely.
You know, not a lot of sympathy when you're in front of the table with issues, so. All right, any, anyone from the audience?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Motion made, seconded.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor of closing? Aye, five, nothing, Pauline. Motion to entertain an action?
Motion to approve the change of manager at Bluefin Lounge in Bass Pro Shop, One Bass Pro Drive, manager to manager James P. Camerata.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, if we would please, the board, if that could be made conditional upon return of the Corey check, number one, and number two, assuming that it was in fact posted. Although, and if both those conditions aren't met, any reaction would be negated, and we'll repost and invite Mr. Camerata back.
On condition of a Corey check?
The application's been submitted, we don't have it back yet.
And the application being properly posted?
And the, and the hearing being properly posted.
Public hearing being properly. You got that, Pauline?
Motion amended, any more discussion?
Oh, there's a Corey request form, that's different than what you're talking about.
I'm sorry?
There's a Corey request.
That's the request.
That's different from what you were talking about.
No, no, we request them, but we almost never get them back by the hearing. They always, you know, they're backed up enormously, we just never get them timely, that's all. But they usually come back fine. We hold, once you approve it, we hold it here until the Corey comes back successful, successfully, and then we issue the license. If it doesn't, we bring it back to you.
So motion was made, amended and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, five, nothing?
Linda.
Linda seconded.
You seconded the motion.
Seconded the motion. Lorraine seconded the motion. Isn't this fun?
Thanks for hanging in there with us.
That's okay, thank you. Best of luck. Thank you. James? Take care.
Okay.
Okay, now, question for the board, the last item we have is the town manager's review, and then a whole bunch of action items. Do you wanna do the action items and clear it, or just do the town review, take a breath and then do the actions?
Let's do the action first, Jim.
We'll do the action and then take a breath and then.
And then come back, take a five minutes and go back for this. Good, good suggestion. All right, action item one, the board of select and meeting minutes on May twenty-second. Take a motion when you're ready.
One typo. On page three. From May twenty-second. It's just minor, eight-twenty, C-O-U-N-S-E-L.
I move that we approve the minutes from May twenty-second as amended.
Motion made, seconded.
Second.
Seconded by Lorraine, any further comments? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed, zero, five, zero. The minutes from May.
Twenty-ninth. On page two, Pauline. One, two, third paragraph up from the bottom, the third sentence, Howard Siegel said the border, board, that the B.O.S. and the town manager, we don't own the manager, we have a town manager. So just change that to town, that's all.
Only own him, all right.
Pauline, on page three, the third paragraph up, says Jim DeVellis pointed out that the opportunity to amend the personnel bylaw was when the town adopted the Strong Town Managers Act. I just don't think I, I wouldn't have said that, I don't know what I did say, but it wasn't that. So could we just strike that?
No, you said, Jimmy, what you said was, you said now's not the time to amend any, you know, I thought you said not the time to be doing that, when we're gonna challenge, review the town managers act, see, you know what I'm saying? He was, Kevin, I think, said he wanted to review.
Can we just start that sentence off?
Yeah, just strike it out.
Strike it.
It's not really relevant.
Not gonna put words in, you know.
Any more changes?
I move that we approve the minutes from May twenty-ninth as amended.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion, all those in favor? Aye, five, nothing, Pauline. We have a donation of a hundred and ten dollars from Jerry Cirillo from the Boyd and Library, to the Boyd and Library gift fund.
So moved.
With gratitude, second.
And specifically, it's noted for the Roger Williams Park Zoo.
Yes.
Yes, very appreciated. So motion made, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
With gratuity, five, nothing, Pauline. We have a resignation, no, I'm sorry, number three, a request for extended alcohol service hours beginning at eleven AM on two thousand twelve for the Patriots home games on Sunday by Red Robin, and they included a schedule of all the home Sunday games.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded. Discussion, is this what we did last year? Remember there was one?
Yes.
There was one that you voted against, that was.
No, it was during, it wasn't, it was for every Patriots game, not for every home game.
Home game, okay, all right, so this is just for the Sunday home game?
This is the home game.
All right, motion made.
Second.
Seconded by Lorraine.
Just a little discussion.
It's a four o'clock game versus one o'clock game.
Right, did you, did you make that? Did we do that for the last person that was in there that?
We said one o'clock games, you can open at eleven.
Right.
And we made, we standardized it for everybody, so we're not gonna do it for a Monday night game, you open at eleven. Well, they could anyways, I believe so, on, but on a Sunday at four-thirty, there's no reason to start at eleven.
Right, so it's just any home games that begin at one?
Yes.
On a Sunday, yeah.
So I'll make the motion that we approve openings at eleven o'clock AM for Patriots home games that start at one o'clock for Red Robin.
Motion made.
Second.
Seconded, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Four, zero, five, zero. Next item is a resignation letter from Robert Hicks. And Bob Hicks has been a member for quite a while, and I wanted to read this letter just so we don't pass over it, because I think it's significant. Dear board members, it was eight years ago that I was honored by being appointed to you, by you, to the Foxborough Historical Commission. Three years ago, I had the distinct privilege of being voted chairman by the commission. This has been a rewarding experience, which I have deeply appreciated and hope to have contributed to the town in those roles. Life changes, and I am now in the process of downsizing and moving to a new location. Accordingly, last December, I advised the commission that I would be stepping down following our last meeting on June two thousand twelve, and this letter is to confirm that to you. At this point, no replacement has been chosen, but reassignment of several roles has been made to ensure continuity. In particular, Kristen Hubby will take responsibility of the financials and budgets, in addition to our current role as secretary. Mark Forensick, Forensic, will assume the management of our database, and with your approval, I will continue to act as an associate member until such a time I relocate. After that, I will do my best to provide a consultative role for those areas mentioned above. Further, I cannot leave without expressing my gratitude to the town and so many people for their amazing support, including yourselves, Kevin Pecos, Randy Scollins, Bob Swanson, Pete Sobel, Dave Lallaberty, Jill Cunio, Christine Dupress, Chris Shury, and most of all, Bill Caspera, Sandra Herman, and the members of the commission, thank you. And it's from Bill Casper, uh, Bill, sorry, Bob Hicks, Foxborough Store Commission. And he's been a member for a very long time and does a tremendous amount of work, so this leaves a big hole.
I move to accept Bob Hicks's resignation with much gratitude.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, no discussion?
Do you wanna also appoint him as an associate member at the same time? Can you do that?
We can, because the next piece of paper is for signing.
Do you wanna do it all together? And his, I think we should accept his resignation and then just.
Okay, motion made to accept his resignation and seconded by, who seconded it?
Lorraine.
Lorraine. More discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Five to nothing, Lorraine. And we have a motion to entertain appointing him as associate member.
Motion to approve Robert Hicks, eighty-four Mill Street, Associate Member, for the term expiring five, one, two thousand thirteen.
Or his relocation.
Or his relocation.
Second.
More discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Five, nothing. Then we have a, okay, that was a second request.
Frank El Souza?
Frank Souza and Charles McAllister to the Audit Committee for three years, appointment starting July first. I'm sorry, expiring on July first, two thousand fifteen.
So moved.
Second.
Second, and more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you to Frank. Bob Boett to the Canoe River Aquifer. Oh, he's sorry, I should know that. To the Canoe River Aquifer AdCom, three-year term expiring July first, two thousand fifteen.
So moved.
Second.
More discussion? Motion made, seconded, all those in favor? Aye, five, nothing, Pauline. And a committee appointment for Francis Bell to the National Organization on Disability for a two-year term expiring July twelfth, two thousand fourteen.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded, discussion? All those in favor? Aye, five, nothing. Matthew Shay, resignation from the Cable TV Advisory Committee.
So moved with gratitude.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, zero, five, nothing. Let me see, Michael and Rose Lincoln, they're requesting permission to hold a fifteenth annual Powderhouse Block Party and close Howard Ave on, to traffic on August eleventh, two thousand twelve, they included a letter. And they, I think they've been doing this every year, as far as I can remember.
Yep.
So moved with Police O'Leary's approval.
Motion made, seconded with condition. Motion made with condition, seconded. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We're five, oh, I think tonight. Amy Walker for the Relay of Life, Relay for Life, requests permission to hold the American Cancer Society Relay for Life at the Ahern School Track on June twenty-second and June twenty-third, that's that eighteen-hour walk, very popular, very official.
All sorts of teams, it's awesome.
Lots of teams.
So moved.
Love to see it.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Five, nothing. Good luck with that, tremendous benefit. Fred Smurlus, First and Goal, application for eight, one-day all-alcohol liquor licenses for the two thousand twelve Patriots home game dates.
So moved, and I just wanna add one caveat to that, if they do flex the schedule at the end, he does not have to come back to us. So approve the one-day liquor license application for Fred Smurlus. Let's see what it says. Yeah, Fred Smurlus, First and Goal, sorry. And it's in, it can be moved if the Patriots dates starting times get moved, because the NFL does that, so he doesn't have to come back to us.
I'm gonna make sure Pauline's getting this, because I'm not.
I'm not getting it, I've been looking for this.
First and Goal, here you go. Yep.
I would've checked it on there. So, yeah, so Pauline, basically, approval of Fred Smurlus, First and Goal, for one-day all-alcohol liquor licenses for the eight home games for the Patriots season, and to allow him to move those dates without reappearing in front of the board if the NFL changes time starts or dates due to their flex schedule.
And for the record, there was included in the package correspondence from Chief Hatfield and Chief O'Leary.
Yep.
Supporting it.
Second.
Motion made with the condition, seconded, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Five, nothing. A lot of signatures tonight.
We did ten.
Yep.
President Barron in the column, we don't need to approve that, do we? The banner's in the column, it's on eleven.
I think we have.
No, you don't, but it, you know, you can certainly.
Entertain a motion to allow Sharon to hang banners on the common for their planning board master plan meetings.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, further discussion, all those in favor? Aye, five, nothing. Residence, we did, not to be confused with the Renaissance. Town manager, we had early discussion on the commercial parking lot license, it was revised per the police, police chief.
Can we get a copy of that at some point?
Sure, yeah. Oh, you mean the.
The regulations.
Regulations.
Yeah, you're running that committee, you're gonna need it.
Is this the mo, the new address for motorcycles of Manchester? Have they moved?
Moms?
Moms, yeah, moms of Manchester, yeah.
Yeah, the old pottery building?
Yep.
So they're not next to the Lafayette House?
Are they not there at all anymore?
Well, I know they were moving down to the, it used to be the pottery place.
Are they, the whole thing is moved down there, though? Because I haven't been by that, I know that the new one's there, but.
Pretty sure it's up and running by now.
Well, then you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to look at that number, Kevin, because it's not one oh eight, it's further down, it's near the state.
But is that where he's parking, the cars, at one oh eight?
Could be, could be.
Does he still own it?
No.
I would imagine so.
I didn't think he still owned it.
Well, we'll just have to check on that one.
Just double-check on that number, Kevin, the motorcycles of Manchester at one oh eight.
Yep.
They've actually moved down closer to. They've actually moved down closer to the barracks.
St. Frupus Barracks, yeah.
So, do you want to revote, or do you just want us to change the address if it has changed on this?
Well, you need to double-check, and I think that there would probably be more, more spaces there too and stuff, so.
Somebody else might be at one oh eight instead.
Right.
And we don't know if.
Do you want me to just cha-, check it and just change the list, or do you want me to bring it back to you?
Ch-, if he applies for more parking spots when he has to go through the whole process, we could just change the address.
No, but if you change the address, you don't know.
Maybe he's not parking people there, who knows?
Hundred and twenty-three spaces.
He's further away, he might not be parking people, so it might be somebody else.
And he may think the license goes to his new address.
Better notify him, they're right.
I think we just better, okay, the ones that we know.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not worried about the part that we need to check it, we'll do that. What I'm asking you is, once we check it, we find out what the case is, what would you like done?
Well, shouldn't, wouldn't we have to vote for, if it's a different?
Well, yeah. If it's the same as this, we're all set, if it changes, then they'll have to come in with an application because we don't know how many spaces and what the protocol is, so.
Right, okay.
And to find out who is now at.
So do you just want us to change it to make this list right?
No.
No, we're approving this list as is presented to us. If the list is wrong, it's obsolete, they can't use it. Okay, then, correct it, bring it back to the next meeting.
Yeah, you want to bring in the right person.
Motion to approve, approve commercial parking lot license renewals effective July first, two thousand twelve.
Motion made, seconded.
Second.
Seconded by Lorraine. More discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five, nothing, Pauline. Five, zero. And we have Peter and Minnie Tran, Berry Yogurt, at two sixty-eight Patriots Place for two thousand twelve Common Vic Twaller's License Application.
So moved.
Second.
That's Common Vic Tulars, Mr. Chairman, you gotta watch more westerns.
Every, I see this and I'm.
Nobody's ever got that right.
We go with John Wayne, John Wayne says bitlers, either one's okay.
The accent on the wrong syllable.
John Wayne also sits with his back to the wall and not to the door, safer.
Carries a big gun, too.
Motion made for the license?
So moved.
Motion made.
Oh, second.
Seconded. Seconded by Linda. All those in favor?
All right, so five-minute break.
Five-minute break.
I think we can open that door.
Yeah, Frank, thanks. Okay, thanks for the few-minute recess. I think one of the last things we have now before we go into executive session is to do the Town Manager's Annual Review.
Mr. Chairman.
Couple of things that carried over from the last discussion, do you want to update on the information you just got?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Sandy actually called in, she's watching the meeting at home, and on the, um.
Transfer alcohol?
The, what was that?
Transfer Red Robin?
Yeah, on the transfer of manager on the Bluefin Lounge, that's erroneously listed as a public hearing, it does not require a public hearing. Their approval is all in order, that'll be processed in the morning, subject only. And by the way, it's also not subject to the core check, I am incorrect. The state just changed, we no longer do the core checks. The applicant has to file the paperwork, the request, that's why it's in your package. But that goes forward to ABCC, they do the core check, and they make the determination if it's clean or not when they review your work. So both conditions on the approval are now satisfied, so that will be issued. And the other thing is, on the parking list, the reference to one oh eight, Washington, is correct. The motorcycle business is keeping their old parking lot, and they're using it as a parking lot. And then they're moving to their new one, but they're not using that as a parking lot. That's why.
Okay.
You guys are aware of that, but the list is correct. So nothing further on that either.
Thanks, Andy. If you're still watching.
Why?
So the Town Manager's Annual Review, what I wanted to do is, let me back up a little bit. The reason we're doing this annual review, Kevin was hired in, in two thousand and ten, and there wasn't any formal reviews. And I know you all know this, this is in case people were watching from home. So part of Kevin's contract, it's written in his contract, is he will go once a year and be reviewed by the selectmen. And that review is predicated on his goals and objectives. Now, the first year, we did, the annual review was in September, okay, so it was a little later. And we reviewed them on a set of criteria. And then we moved on. Since that first review, we revisited that set of criteria and fine-tuned it more in tune to what your contract says, okay? So if you remember, the forty or so goals and objectives, they're the same goals and objectives, more or less. Some got dropped off, some got added on, but we took those goals and objectives and broke them down into eight categories. Supervision, leadership, execution of policy, community relations, economic development, alignment with the board, finance management, and execution of tasks. So whatever that goal and objective was, if it was putting solar panels on the landfill, that fell under one of these categories. Once those goals and objectives were set, you need a.
No, I just wanted Lorraine to hear me that stack, I'm sorry.
So once that, those goals and objectives were in those categories, we asked each member to sit with Kevin and go over your review, ask questions, run things off him, and then come back and fill out our evaluation. Linda and I met with Kevin, we sent it out to the board, and we have a standard format that each of us had, the identical forms. You all submitted those to me, with the exception of Ginny, because you weren't on the board. And Larry submitted his, so the five members reviewed Kevin on his performance. And the reason that we had Larry do it was because one Larry was the chairman for the complete year, and he submitted the review prior to the election. So he was a selectman when he had contact with Kevin, and he was a selectman when he submitted his review. So under those eight categories, we ranked Kevin on, under, for five levels. The worst being one, unacceptable, the best being outstanding, and then the categories from unacceptable up were, two was conditional, three was satisfactory, four was exceptional, and five was outstanding. So what I passed back to the board last Friday was I took verbatim all of your comments and listed them with your name under that category, ranked them, and gave an overall score. I'll leave it up to the board, I took those, that composite review, and I prepared a summary which I can go through. You've all looked at each one of our comments, and you've looked at it. I can give a summary of each of the topics, or I can just open it up for discussion. How do you guys feel about that?
Well, I think that we've all spoken to Kevin as a one-on-one. But I think it's important that the public understand, you know, what we said and why we said it, I guess.
Okay, yeah. Do you want me to go through each of the categories and kind of give a summary of what I picked from, I don't want to be redundant, but.
I mean, that's, that's just my thought. The rest, you know, should chime in.
Ginny, even though you didn't give the review, do you want to participate in how it's run?
Oh, chime in.
Lorraine?
I think just the general summary approach.
General summary, I think, fine.
So I won't read all your comments, but these, this is what I came out, under supervision. Let me skip to the end a little bit. While, while we're doing this review, it's important to understand that you're being reviewed by five selectmen. We probably spend eight or ten hours with you a month, twice a week. Foxborough, over this last year, has been gone through a very tumultuous time. Good word.
Yeah, I like it. Word of the day.
And I think we've all learned a lot. You're gonna be sitting with selectmen, and you've got twenty-plus years, you're gonna be sitting with selectmen that think you're the best guy in the world, and you're gonna be sitting in your career with selectmen that would want to fire you tomorrow if they had the chance, and everywhere in between. So I'm gonna ask you, when you're listening to these critiques, what, what we have that you, that you don't have is we have some insight into Foxborough, we're elected, and we're trying to do what is right for the town. So from our perspective, this is constructive criticism, because the stronger your position is, the better it is for the town. So if you could just take your defensive, if you have one, glasses off, and just listen to what I think the selectmen were, were coming in, and for the most part. Sure.
I'm sorry, I, I just wanted to comment on the email I'd sent you.
Okay, sure.
I, I think that all of the information that was submitted was very well-done, very fair. My concern in terms of actually including Larry Harrington's comments in here is that contractually, we are obligated, the Board of Selectmen is obligated to evaluate Kevin, and this evaluation is, I believe should be comprised of our, the four of our comments. I, I think having Larry's comments on file, it's a public document, he did file it there. I think that's certainly appropriate to have that, you know, his comments on file, but in terms of the actual evaluation, I am concerned that if we include those, the information from someone who is not currently on the board, and we are currently evaluating right now, that from a technical standpoint, we really are not complying with our obligation as a board. So I'm not saying not to, you know, to ignore Larry's comments in any way, I think, you know, having them on file would be appropriate. I, I just don't think it should be included in this as the final document. It's, it's a real concern that I have, long-range, you know, in terms of an employee, town, relationship, not so much the relationship, just from a legal perspective, I, I have a concern about that.
Should we ask Leo while he's here?
I think that's a great idea.
Hey.
I'm not sure if.
Well, the only thing, I, I don't, I don't have the benefit of having.
Leo, you wanna come up?
Yeah.
Leo, can you come up?
Let's jump to the table a little bit.
I don't have the benefit of having the contract in front of me, but I heard enough of it, I understand that Larry was evaluating because he had been here for the period of evaluation, if you will.
Yeah, Larry was the chairman of a complete year, up until May seventh.
Right.
He provided the board, he provided Kevin directly, and it provided me as chairman, his evaluation of Kevin on May fifth, it was before the election. So it reflects his, his review of his full year with Kevin before he left the board.
And wasn't there, was there some discussion about that before Larry left as to?
This, the process had started well before.
Right, but wasn't there some discussion about who should be evaluating Kevin?
Yes. I think the discussion was, I think, from my recollection, Larry, his review had merit, Ginny's did not. Actually, I don't even think we were specifically talking about Ginny, I think it was what happens after the election versus before.
We had actually asked to have, like, the Water and Sewer Commissioners kind of chime in, and, and I don't know that they ever did, but I know that the process had started before he left because I actually had sent my evaluation to, to Larry, so.
I, I, and I may be picking this up anecdotally, but I thought there was some discussion about doing the evaluation after the election as opposed to before, and the compromise was it will be done after, but it will be done based on submissions before the election. So wasn't there kind of an agreement between Kevin and the board members that that was how it was gonna be done?
I don't think so.
No?
No. I didn't agree.
Okay, okay, so I mean, I'm, I really was out of the loop on that, but I, why did Larry turn his in before the election?
No, he didn't.
He did, he gave it to me, he gave it to Kevin. This is the email I got from Larry, Jim, here's my evaluation, I had already given it to Kevin. Who knows what's gonna happen at the election, but.
Right.
I, I want to submit it, so that's what I received.
Should we give Leo time to review this before we move forward? I had to put him on the spot without reviewing the whole concept here, is kind of asking for a knee-jerk interpretation of something.
Well, maybe, maybe what I, was there an, was there an agreement to extend the time for the evaluation? In other words, were you gonna, were you coming up against it, there was something about an extension and when things would be put in, and?
Yeah, and then I think at that time, we asked you for a letter for the file.
Yes.
To extend it. And you did not provide that letter.
I did not.
And. Okay.
One of the reasons that I was asking the question is that, you know, the first time Kevin was evaluated, and there had been a change in the board.
Yeah.
And the person who had worked with him the prior year, their input was not included, so.
Case law study right there.
You know, so that, that's part of my concern, but I really feel that if I'm black and white-looking and I need, obviously, an attorney to look at the, at the contract, well, it says the Board of Selectmen, we are, we are the Board of Selectmen.
So you have kind of, Board of Selectmen changes after an election, but you're really evaluating based on performance in a period where there was a sitting member that's no longer sitting.
Right. And, you know, they have provided their information is on file, that's a public document, but I think in terms of the spirit of the contract is most concerning.
Ultimately, the consequence of the evaluation is to determine whether there ought to be some increase.
Yes.
In salary, so, so, and, and that's, is that, that's not necessarily tied to a numerical figure, but it's a determination of the existing board. So it, it, it might be that if, you know, whether, whether Mr. Harrington's evaluation is part of the process at all, it, it doesn't have a consequence since the existing board's gonna make a determination as, you know, it, it sounds like there's a consensus that maybe they don't want to consider Mr. Harrington's evaluation, and the existing board's gonna make a determination as to whether there ought to be an increase. So I guess I'm not sure what's the.
If I may, if I may, Lorraine. Prior board member, did we even start the evaluation process?
It was due the same time, we were way overdue.
It didn't come out to September, so the timeframe is way different, so it doesn't really come together like that. And did that person offer to pull one in? I mean, I, I understand your point here.
Technically, they had worked with him longer than you had, you know, so.
I didn't pull one in until September, and it was, and I stated that many times, that I had just started working with Kevin, I have no way of evaluating him at all.
Right.
So, I mean.
It, it would strike me that the spirit of the evaluation process is for those that have worked with him to evaluate him. The Board of Selectmen, it wouldn't make, I mean, let's, let's say that for some ridiculous reason, the whole board turned over, and there were five new people, it would be kind of crazy for five new people to be evaluating someone they hadn't worked with. So, I mean, I, I don't think it's inconsistent with the provision that says the board should evaluate them. But I guess my point is, at the end of the day, this board can discount a departed member's evaluation and consider only how it has evaluated Kevin in determining what is really at stake here, which is, should he be given an increase? So I, I don't see a legal issue in terms of that if you're not gonna consider the departed member's evaluation anyways.
I, I would feel much more comfortable as a board if you would take a little time to do this so we can move forward cautiously. That would be my opinion here. It's good, Leo's here, it's a good thing he was here for this. We're in another meeting coming up, it's, it's an evaluation. Two weeks is not gonna kill us.
Okay.
All right, I, I'd feel comfortable with that, Jim, I mean.
Could I, am I putting you on the spot, Kevin, do you care whether Larry's evaluation is in place, or do you want to think about that?
Talking.
I indicated to Jim that the inconsistencies between the two years of departing board members troubled me, because it was treated one way one year and a different way the following year. Having said that, I think, to me, what's important, and what's important to this community, is that the board give an indication of where you feel I'm getting it done, and where you feel I need to improve, and I've got that. Irrespective of who wrote it, I've got that. With respect to the, the goals and objectives going forward, what we. With respect to the goals and objectives going forward, what we did last year, what we did this year, and what presumably I would do now with this, is I would try to draft a set of goals and objectives that responds to this, i.e., that continues the work that the board finds satisfactory, and try to draft new goals in areas where we've indicated a need for improvement. The little tricky part there is, obviously, I wouldn't be drafting goals that are responsive to comments from a board member who's not here because going forward, it's this board that I serve now. I think I can do that because I've got the individual board members' concerns, and I, so, I don't, from the point of view of the whole purpose of this, to draft new goals, I don't have a problem with this. From the point of view of what the board decides with respect to compensation and how they treat this, as I said to Jim, as long as the evaluation of the departing board member was not used in that decision, I had no objection, because indeed, a departing board member can write any document they want and submit it, and I see no harm in that. I mean, frankly, it's valuable to me, you know, so.
So I really didn't kind of direct the answer from that. Did somebody?
Well, he doesn't mind if you use Mr. Harrington's evaluation, as long as you don't use it as a basis to determine whether he should get an increase in compensation.
Right.
That's what I get.
You know, in all fairness then. Ginny's been on the outside looking in for the whole year, she's seen the process, then her evaluation form should be involved.
Well, that's a different issue.
I mean, she's a standing board member. If you're going to cast one out, you're going to bring one in. If you, you know what I'm saying?
But I don't-
She didn't have a, you know, she had kind of a bird's eye view, but she didn't have a front row seat. I, frankly, I don't know whether the board, in determining the compensation, if the board's not going to consider Mr. Harrington's evaluation anyways, then you, it seems to me you have a match. If the board wants to consider Mr. Harrington's evaluation, then I think I have to look at it and give you an answer as to whether or not that's appropriate. I just, you know.
Well, Leo, the ironic thing is whether Larry's review is in there or not. The rating system that we have, one through five, is almost identical. Some of the statements that he has is different than the other ones.
Right.
Some of the statements that, you know, sometimes he's on one side, one person's on the other, sometimes they're in the middle, and other times it's reversed.
Right.
But the numerical score at the end of the day is not different.
Right, right.
So, you know, again, I go back to, why are we doing this? I think we want to add constructive criticism, we want to point on the good parts and the bad parts. And rather than, you know, look at a timeline where one member is gone, Larry, more than any of us last year, sat with Kevin at more meetings, more department issues, more finance and budget than anyone here, so to discount that in the discussion, and frankly, even on the, you know, going to the salary, the contract is not based on, if it's a three, it's a 1%, or if it's a four, it's subjective. He could get glowing recommendations, and someone might think he gets $100, someone, $1,000. There's no rhyme and reason to the score and the monetary value at the end.
Well, I guess it's not a formula, but, you know, ultimately, a bad evaluation would mean either no increase or a lesser increase than a great evaluation.
Correct.
Kevin has acknowledged that Larry's evaluation is valuable to him for at least the purpose of going forward. The question is whether it ought to be in the mix for the compensation question.
And what I'm saying, if we take that out, the score at the end doesn't change.
Doesn't make any difference.
But I think it's important to have that in the discussion because, you know, for instance, if I leave next year, I've got a wealth of information from 12 months that I think people should listen to, right or wrong, it's, that's what I'm here for. So to discount that doesn't make any sense to me.
If it says the Board of Selectmen shall evaluate, it seems to me, if there's an evaluation period that we're talking about, and there's a board member here for that evaluation period, then they have a right to submit an evaluation, and it ought to be considered.
I mean, the other thing is, it's due when? June 30th, right, is when this is due?
Is, I'm sorry?
This evaluation is due to you June, at the end of each full year, correct?
No.
When is it due?
The contract says the evaluation is due March 1st, in the month of March. But in no event later than the first day of, I think, May. And what it does, it creates a window, and the reason we wrote it that way was to cover the possibility that the second week of May at the election, a board member would leave office who I had worked with for the year. So we specifically recognized that in my contract and wrote it in a way to prevent it. Unfortunately, what happened is it kind of, I think, got away due to the events. And so Larry realized, you know, late in the game, it hadn't gotten done because, frankly, nobody's fault. We were just all very distracted. And so he tried to repair that by saying, you know, we'll get it done now. And so had you done this back in March, as my contract calls for, it would have been the same five people that ended up doing this.
But at that point, Kevin, I think I realized that there was going to be a mismatch on your contract terms when you got it, and we specifically asked you to recognize that in a letter and send it to the board to say, it's not going to happen by that date because we had a whirlwind of stuff going on, and it's going to happen in June, and that letter didn't get written.
No, and that discussion I'd prefer to have with the board in executive session.
Okay.
But.
Exactly why we should be reviewing this through you as counsel also.
Well, this is public.
This part is pub, this is becoming unpopular rapidly, in case you didn't catch the drift. I think we should put this off, Jim, have discussion with Leo, and we'll move forward. He can have discussion with Kevin, see how he wants to guide the board, that's why we pay him. I stress that, that's the avenue we take right now, because this is not going to work out good. I know it ain't, if we don't have that discussion. You don't have that discussion with Leo as the chairman, and then we'll put it on for another agenda and discuss this with the guidance of our attorney.
And the board members? Lorraine?
Can we submit questions to you forward to Leo?
You know what, I'm not going to entertain questions to go through me to Leo. This is a public review, this is what it's all about, we put it on the table. I'm not going to go into executive session with questions. I think this is getting to the point of, you know, if Larry had a glowing review, we wouldn't be sitting in this, if things fell the other way, people are upset about it. You know, Larry has just as much right to submit a review, he did it. He's the only one that did it on time, the rest of us did not. He was punctual, his review was the most complete. Some of the stuff I agree, some I don't, you know, there might be angles, you know, let's face it, it was the casino and all that stuff that came down. Take it all into consideration, just as your review had the same slight slant, the election, the casino, whatever, Larry's did too. You know, I'm not wasting any more time going to executive session. This is, it takes the credibility out of this whole process. You know, if we go forward and we make a mistake, you know, we get sued, whatever. I'm not, I'm not worried.
The thing is that this is a public document now anyways.
It's a public document for everyone to review. We made copies for everybody if they want to take it home.
I don't know what.
I agree with you, Jim. Everything you just said, I totally agree with you. I'm just asking that counsel agrees with us.
I'm not going to do anything about compensation this evening anyway, and that does need to be done.
Because the tank is decision made down by the board down the process that could inherently be blamed on this. That's, Leo, am I far off?
My reaction is a sitting board member that sits for the evaluation period has a right to submit an evaluation, and the board has a right to consider.
Okay, then we're going with it.
I mean, that's my reaction to it. It would seem to me, the opposite would seem to me unfair, which is, someone comes in and is here for a month and just happens to be here for the time people are preparing their evaluations. That really isn't the spirit of it. You're supposed to be evaluated by those who have seen you in action. And if the evaluation is appropriate because you sat there for the time period of the evaluation, then it's appropriate to be considered for all purposes.
And we also have Kevin saying in open session that he would extend the evaluation period, and he was supposed to submit a letter, but he didn't, but it is in the minutes that he did extend the evaluation period. Do you agree?
Yep.
All right, so that, you're saying that covers us?
The contract may require a written, I imagine you asked for something in writing, because the contract probably requires something in writing.
Well, we did request something in writing six weeks ago, and we did not receive it, so obviously, we still need that in writing. Jim, back to you.
Let me help you out here. As I've already said, I think an expression of evaluation from a board member that's not here is helpful to me. Whether the board member is sitting or not, every one of you represents a constituency in this community. And so receiving your input is valuable to me because it gives me a slice of how, you know, a part of the community feels I'm doing the job, so that's a good thing. And again, I have no objection to the inclusion of Larry's evaluation in this document, particularly since it's now a public record, so why object?
Right, right, exactly.
I also know as a practical point of view, whether you include the evaluation of a departed board member or not, there's only two things that come out of this. One is your decision if my compensation is going to be affected. That's a decision of the five of you, even Ginny, because whether she participated, she's a board member. Whether you abstain or you vote is up to you. Guess what I'm saying is, with respect to one of the two decisions, you're going to make that decision, not a departed board member, so I don't have any problem with that. The other process that has to come out of this is the attempt to craft new goals that reflect what you want. Obviously, I'm not going to write a goal that reflects what a departed board member wants unless that thought happens to be shared by other board members. I find by and large that the concerns that you have expressed in terms of the desire for improvement is pretty common among you, not universally, but pretty common. So I think with this document, I'm going to be able to craft a new set of goals and objectives, which hopefully you will spend some time reviewing, and it'll be a very successful effort, and it'll let us move forward, and I'll have a good document to work with for the next year. So if that helps, and I hope it does.
Okay, so I think that helps a lot.
The only, you asked me a question, and I'm not comfortable answering it, and that's why I said I don't want to answer that one question, but that wasn't the comment.
Oh, why you didn't submit the letter, I understand that.
Exactly, that wasn't a comment on the whole process, Jim, it was just that one little question.
Yep, understood. So the piece that's missing out of this to move forward is the goals and objectives. We reviewed it on this, Lorraine had emailed out, I think Mark and I owe her some more work on the goals and objectives to mark it up. You guys have given her, Lorraine, so there's three goals and objectives. We're going to get that to Lorraine, she'll compile it, and then based on this review, you can tackle the new goals and objectives based on this information. So I'm comfortable, and we've done a lot of work to get to this point. And I'm not shying away of getting questions to give to Leo, I don't think it's necessary, and I think it puts an umbrella of what's going on, distrust. I'd rather have it all open, it seems like our town, our labor council's comfortable, Kevin's comfortable. I say we move forward with it, and forge ahead. Everyone okay?
I just want to, again, say, my question was posed because of concerns that I had based on conversations I've had with Kevin, so I'm just putting it out there that.
What are those conversations? I think you should just tell us, Lorraine, right? What did you, is there a problem, Kevin, about proceeding tonight?
I think it's very simple, really.
Okay.
As I said to Jim, I have no objection one way or the other to whoever the board wants to have evaluate me. If you want to have department heads weigh in, you want to have the public weigh in, the more input, the richer the process, the more beneficial it is to me. So I don't really care about that part of it. The only part I care about is that when the decision is made on what the new goals will be, i.e. my work plan for next year, which feeds to all the department heads. And secondly, your decision with respect to my compensation, that that is a decision exclusively of the board members who are currently sitting.
Well, we don't have Larry here to make a, make, Larry is not sitting here on the board, so that when we do talk about the compensation, which will be in the executive session, we don't have Larry sitting at the table or anybody else but us five members to say, you know, this is what we're looking at, and we discuss, so.
The thoughts that I expressed earlier to Jim were that the numerical evaluation, if it was consistent, more or less, I mean, it might be a 3.2 if Larry's wasn't in there, it might be a 2.0, it is a 2.8 if it is, but they're both essentially rounded up or down to a 3, satisfactory performance.
And that's what, that's what Jim just stated, that the numbers aren't going to change.
Right, I didn't know that till I saw this. So the earlier concerns I expressed, which were a couple of weeks ago, were without the benefit of seeing this in front of me and knowing what the scores were going to be. Now that I have that, and I see that there is general consistency, and that with or without that one evaluation, it could be a little higher, but not dramatically higher, I'm a lot less concerned than I might have been before I saw all this.
You're upset now, Lorraine, that?
There's just one category that I think would need to be recalculated then, because.
The one where there's a substantial discrepancy, yeah.
Right. Again, overall, it doesn't change the total outcome, but it's just one category goes from.
It's a, you're calling it a discrepancy because it's not in line with the other members. It's not a discrepancy, it's an opinion.
It's an opinion, right.
You know, let's all, you know, next one, we'll all do threes and go, that's not what this is about.
Why bother doing it, why bother doing it then?
You know?
Yeah.
Can I just ask a question?
No, no, actually, no, you can't.
Do you need a question answered?
Then Linda can speak, I can't put it into the audience, we're in the middle of this.
All I'm asking is there be that one recalculation, that's all, when we do come to the point of discussing. Or it's not even.
This, this meeting is not to talk about salary, we'll go that, we'll do that in executive session.
I agree. I'm good now that I've heard you say that, Kevin, thank you.
So.
I just, you know, I just, you know, when we start, we're up here and we start like saying, well, I had a conversation with Kevin, and that's great, you know, have your conversations, but you know what, bring it to the table. I don't know how many times I have, I'm not going to go off, but I am going to say, all business is at this table. You know, we've been accused of, you know, doing things behind the scenes and things like that, and one board member speaking to the town manager without the information coming back, that's not right. So just like anybody else, that upsets me, and it raises up a flag to me, and I'm sure it does to the folks at home. So let's keep it at the table, that's what we're here to discuss this evening. No, I'm not going to go off anymore, I'm sorry, Jim, sorry.
No, no need to apologize, everyone's a little frustrated with this.
You know, I just feel like, you know, it's like, well, I don't want to talk about that, but, you know, well, why not? What is it, is there something that's, if there's something under the, undercurrent, I want to know about it. You know, if, you know, don't just keep it to yourself or between you and Lorraine. I mean, you need to talk to the chairman and, or someone.
I did.
All right.
You mentioned it to me, and I, just like I.
Again, reach out Ted, you know.
He can only talk to two.
One second, Kevin expressed his concern about Larry's review, that it wasn't good. I took it under advisement, I looked at all the other ones, it fell into line, some of it wasn't nice to hear. You know, some of it's true, some of it's not, who knows? But it's a, it's a board member, I'm not going to critique another board's member, critique of the town manager, because that's his right to do. Come the end of this year, there's going to be two members that are going to be up. We better figure this out now because we're going to, it's going to be worse next year. Larry is the only one that did his job on time, got it submitted, the rest of us let it out, you know, let it go by. Kevin never submitted the letter, and we're dealing with this now because of that. But Larry's the only one that documented his review prior to the election and put it down on paper. Nobody else did that.
Just as, I did send Larry mine because he asked us to, so.
Okay.
Because I thought that, you know.
Yeah, you're right, yours did go in. But what I'm saying is, you know, we're all doing it.
Right.
A month late, so, except for you, you're right, you're right. So Leo, can I ask you to leave the table?
Sure.
No offense, I want it to be a little more comfortable. And again, and I started off saying, you know, we're not professional town managers, we're volunteers. We work with you a few days, a few hours out of the month. There's certain insight that we have when our phone rings and the years that we've lived here that you don't have, so listen to it, you might agree with it or not, but if you can just bear with us. I'll cut to the chase at the end, you've seen it, out of a score of 1 through 5, unacceptable being the worst, and outstanding, you fell right in the middle, satisfactory. With the hell of a year that we've had, with the power outages, with the casino, with the economy, if you come out of this as satisfactory, then I think you're doing very well. And I know many town managers that wouldn't even get satisfactory. There's certain things that you did well, and there's certain things that you didn't do well, from our opinion. So it's our opinion. Once we finish this process, we'll go into executive session at a different day, and we'll. Once we finish this process, we'll go into executive session at a different day and we'll figure out if there's a, if there's a, a merit raised based on what we're hearing. So. Now, just so the public knows, there's 14 pages of our review, okay? It's public record, submitted it to the board and there's copies there. What I did is I took all of the redundancy out of it and just kind of took the highlights and, and went through again from my perspective. Under supervision, you got a 2.8 out of five and we rounded that to a 3. Now each one of these categories has the same weight. So if you, in, in the end of the score, so supervision is worth the same as leadership, as the same as executive. So under supervision, does the town manager adequately supervise department heads appropriately delegate, promote competent, competency of staff, ensure collaboration and efficiency, hold people accountable, manage conflict, et cetera? I didn't put any names on this, but generally, this is what I was hearing from everybody. Recognition for initiating programs and initiatives for better collaboration within town departments and staff. I'm saying recognize you for doing that. You instituted regular meetings and outreach that did not exist before. Several questioned your management style of heaping public praise over and over publicly, which is very good. However, when there is seldom criticism or constructive criticism, that management style is very limited and perhaps short-lived. One recommendation was to, was to explore an independent evaluation of your management skills. However, others agreed that there has been substantial change in the supervision and after almost two years, you've kept up. So that's under leadership. I mean, under supervision. Under leadership, you got a 2.6, which we rounded to 3 out of the 5, again satisfactory. Does the town manager inspire and effectively influence others, act decisively, adaptable, have effective interpersonal skills, demonstrate a high regard for personal ethics, offer practical innovative ideas? Does he have the courage to deliver bad news when needed? This category out of all was split. One evaluation was low, two were high and two were in the middle. The billboard issue was of serious concern and how this was handled at the public meeting with a very public approach to the press. Another issue is one day we're in the red about the budget and concerned about the budget and overnight, seems like overnight, we are cash strong. These came from your office and has far-reaching effects. On the other side, Kevin's actions during the power outages and implementing new policies, which have not been done before and appear successful, bring in high scores. The score in the middle reflects on an issue that we are looking into, which is who should be, under leadership, who should be and who has the responsibility and ability to lead? Is it at the Board of Selectmen or the town manager through the Strong Town Managers Act? Stated within the review was the casino issue and was Kevin's role to take this, was it Kevin's role to take a stand? His right to do, obligation, or was he acting out of the capacity and into the, into the Board of Selectmen role? Unfortunately, this issue and the fallout scattered the evaluation results and balanced us in the middle, although there was clear opposing opinions. So again, you got satisfactory. Three, execution of policy. You got exactly 3 out of the 5 satisfactory. Does the town manager understand the laws and ordinances of the town and cause them to be fairly enforced? Consistent that Kevin understands, it was consistent across the board that Kevin understands the policies and laws through 30-plus years of experience and most felt he works to that satisfaction. One felt that Kevin, although confident in his experience, should take the opportunity to check with council in certain situations before being confrontational in situations when up against conflicting information. In other words, take a timeout because there are other perspectives at play and a legal opinion would better serve than your municipal, municipal experience. Community relations, 2.4. This rounded down to 2 out of the 5 and this is one of the categories where we deemed that it was conditional and it needs improvement. Does the town manager work well with citizens to properly handle their issues or complaints? Is he readily available to the public? Does he address their issues timely? Does he take the time to understand the political ramifications of issues? Again, this is where we have needs improvement. Community outreach in town has improved. More visibility, accountability for the time, increased communication with community members. Compared to the first year, it has been a drastic improvement, but also more room to continue to improve. General request, general request for a citizen's log when the public reaches out to the town hall that was asked for, by a few people. It should be documented as to the issues as well as the good news that come through town. The monthly reports are inconsistent. As good and as fast as positive communication comes, it disappeared quickly with the public comments to the press. Using the press as a tool by the town manager to defend, attack, make remarks to inflame a situation is not the way that this town has operated in the past. And I got to say that was consistent across the board and very loud from the public. Economic development, the fifth category, 2.8. So we rounded it up to 3 out of 5 satisfactory. Does the town manager work well with developers while protecting the town's interest? Does he work to increase the town's tax base through economic development or other revenue suggestions? We, we rated you on, generally on average on this. This year, this year has been turbulent at best, but there has been steps to achieve some of the goals. Concerns stated over increased fees, split, split tax rate without proper vetting, lack of movement on the town asset review committee were comments made in the evaluation. One member felt Kevin exceeded his expectations in this category and balancing it out, the rating was satisfactory. So he had a little, a low and a little high on that one. Alignment with the board, 2.2 out of 5. So we rated it 2 out of 5. Again, conditional needs improvement. How well does Kevin function under the policy direction of the board? Does he, does he communicate often enough in appropriate details and in advance of us reading things in the newspaper? Is he open to new ideas? Does he return phone calls and emails on a timely basis? Does he meet with us individually as needed? The majority felt that there was much improvement needed in this category. Emotional outbursts publicly challenging member of the Board of Selectmen at the meetings, confrontationally and in the press automatically are items that are brought to light by the nature of this topic. Balance in this item is the fact that there are members that may sit on the other side of the topic and see things as the opposite. The majority feel that the communication and accent above needs improvement. Financial management, 3 out of 5. It was a 3.2 rounded down to 3, which is satisfactory. How well was the budget prepared? Did it include innovative ideas? Was input sought from all applicable sources? Were budget presentations easily understood? How well does the town adhere to the budgets? Is the Board of Selectmen updated regularly on the monthly financial results? Does he listen to the advice of the board? This was one of Kevin's strong areas, although there were concerns about the information regarding going from bad news to good news seemingly overnight. The programs focusing on cost reductions in town budget was very positive. The last one, execution of tasks, 3.4, which is 3 out of 5 satisfactory. How does the town manager executed against, how has the town manager executed against his established goals and objectives? Be specific as to where he has exceeded or has areas of improvement, areas to improve. This is Kevin's highest category of the evaluation. Kevin has worked hard to tackle the tasks that have been given to him. Overall, the Board of Selectmen felt that he has taken on too much and someone with as many years of experience should be able to know when to push back or the pile will keep getting better. And I think generally, that goes to the 40 categories and growing, 40 goals. I wanted to read a couple of the accomplishments and strengths following the review. Each member was asked to give their strong points and strengths and a lot of them were redundant, which I. Let me see. I highlighted one of them. I apologize. All right. If it's a little redundant, I, I apologize, but I don't have my marked up one. Accomplishments, again with no names, but generally, these are the sentiment. Some of the accomplishments, what do you feel are the town manager's finest accomplishments? Handling of the town, the two storms last year, addressing the health insurance and loss management costs, the fiscal 2013 budget preparation, meetings with the seniors, national grid in the storm, strong negotiating skills, provided meaningful team building. One member thought bringing Roger Hill to the Fox, to Foxborough and keeping on Bob Swanson in the long run, it, it will pay off well. Has shown great leadership with the disaster, natural disasters. Gave the finest speech at Veterans Day I've ever heard. Should be the guest speaker at Memorial Day. What do you feel are the town's managers' three strongest points? Financial skills, knowledgeable of the impact of insurance programs, innovation and willingness to try new ideas. Looking to regional, regionalization. Very knowledgeable overall town management, reasonable advocate for the employees. Communicates well with the finance department and established budgets and health insurance. Works well with most department heads. Improvement, what do you feel are the three things that the town manager could improve upon? Leadership skills, communication skills, ability to work collectively, collaboratively with others. Always keep Foxborough in good light with the media. Don't let politics get in the way of advising the board. Reach out to all board members when in a quandary about situations. Perception of presence at town hall. Try to be less emotional when dealing with difficult encounters. Use less hyperbole. Try to avoid media. Refer to, refer them to the Board of Selectmen regarding policy issues. Listen and observe. Accept constructive criticism. The townspeople have not embraced him and feel slighted. Kevin needs to establish a relationship with them. Kevin's done better than last year, letting the Board of Selectmen debate the issue, but still needs to improve. Town hall is a problem with personnel. Many people still feel, still feel bullied and have no trust in leadership. And then there was additional comments, which I sent, but I don't think there was anything in the additional comments that were out of line with what I've already said and other than go through it. So again, there were two areas of self, needs improvement. Overall, if you add all eight and then do the math, you get a 2.8, which comes into satisfactory. Meets selectmen's expectations with the understanding that there were some highs and lows to, that balance it off. So I thought that was important to get on the table, not to go into executive session because I don't think there was a lot of surprises that the public needed to be kept in the talk about. So at that point, discussion on the board?
No, thank you. I think you summarized it well. I think you did a great job bringing it collectively together and I appreciate it. And when, anybody want to add?
I agree 100%. Again, just one calculation, number six. If you recalculate, it comes up to 2.5, which brings it up to the next level. So you might want to just correct that for the record, basically. Great job putting it together. This was really hard.
Kevin, you want to, I don't want to put you on the spot, but let it go. Do you want to respond to anything?
Just, just two comments. Number one, I certainly agreed with you, Jim, that this has been a most extraordinary year. When I say this year, I mean this past year. And I think it has been a learning curve for me with, I won't speak for the points. I wouldn't presume to do that, but it has certainly been a learning curve for me. It has been, in my career, probably the most challenging year I've ever seen. The board's work on this is clearly you all worked collectively very hard on this and I really, very much appreciate that. It is always difficult to listen to yourself, be criticized in public, but that's the living I've chosen to have. And so, you know, it's okay. And I know it's hard for you to do it. It's always a little awkward. But I think we got through it two times in an exemplary manner. And again tonight, and I thank the chairman, I thank all the board members. For me, it is absolutely clear that what this community wants in the coming year is a bit less of me speaking and a lot more of you speaking. I hear it. I understand. I hope you've been watching the last three or four meetings. I'm trying very hard to do that. At the same time, the town manager has certain responsibilities that I've got to discharge under the, under the charter of the Strong Manager Act. And so I'm trying to learn how to strike that balance better. I would very much like to be what you'd like me to be. Because I love the work. And so I'd love to satisfy you. I will not satisfy every one of you all the time and I certainly won't satisfy this entire community, 17,000-plus citizens, all the time. It is not the nature of this job. And I think you know that. But I will try my level best to continue improving. I appreciate the fact that the board has offered some encouragement in places where I've improved over the last year in response to your guidance and areas where you want to see me continue to improve. And I will do my little best to do it. So thank you. It's a productive process and I appreciate all the work you put in on this. Thanks very much. And I think the next step is I come back to you with some new goals. And you take a look at them and that'll be a combination of the ones that we have now that are working and I think you value and want us, projects you want us to work on and some new ones that try to address some of this. And I'll be working on that. I don't know that you've given me a timetable, but I'm thinking two or three weeks, something like that.
I think you might have it backwards because we've got this on the agenda, I think at the next meeting for the goals and objectives.
I don't know what I was thinking.
Yeah. Lorraine, Lorraine is putting them together. We're going to give you our goals and objectives.
Oh, right. You're going to give me some stuff. Great.
But I think what we're all, you're also hearing in this is if there's too much on there, push back and say, this is ridiculous. You know, I don't want to, we don't, I don't think we want to put stuff on you and then you say you need five more staff members to do it. Do what you can handle, but from your experience, push back.
Sure.
Because each year, it's just going to build on and, you know, nobody likes to look at that Excel spreadsheet when there's 70 things and say, in process. If it's doable, do it. If not, say it can't be done or we'll, we'll change it. But I think that's the, the next step. And I think that's on to next week's agenda.
Next week's agenda for me to deliver something back to you, because.
No, Lorraine.
We're going to discuss our goals and objectives. You're going to participate.
You're submitting to Lorraine.
And you're going to either buy into them. We're going to have that joint discussion back and forth.
Great. Thanks.
Next week is the town council. So it'll be.
This is the next regular meeting. Next week is a special meeting. The regularly scheduled meeting is the following.
Gotcha.
All right.
Says it best.
Motion?
We have to go into executive session. I move that we go into executive session for the purpose of.
Litigation and strategy with respect to collective bargaining.
Okay. And to come out only to adjourn.
Motion made by Linda, seconded. All those in favor, Linda?
I, yes. Sorry.
I, yes.
Green?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Chairman, yes. So 5, 5-0.
Thank you.